Okay, you're all set Marty.
All right, at 6:32 calling to order the August 18, 2020, meeting of the Town of South Rose Board of Selectmen. And we have a full complement of Selectmen, as well as Town Administrator Mark Purple and Assistant Town Administrator Vanessa Hale. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the South Row Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of South Rose website at www.southrowtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at Now, in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on South Rose's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. All right. So the, the, the second item on our agenda is public comment, but before I just get, before I get to that, I'd just like to note the passing of, I don't know if you can call a town resident a legend, I think John Morrow comes pretty close to that. He passed away this past week. He was a longtime employee of St. Mark's, contributed mightily to the town of South Row in a variety of capacities, was the father of fire chiefs and a longtime call firefighter himself. And condolences obviously to his family and all of those who are close to him. And again, it's a, it's a great loss for the, the Town of South Row as well. With that, today is the, tonight is the first meeting where we will try our dual public comment. And so before we get to our scheduled appointments, is there anyone in the virtual audience who wants to weigh in with public comment before we get going? Vanessa, any hands raised? I think you're muted.
Sorry, there are no raised hands right now.
Okay, then I'll get to scheduled appointments. And the first one is Mr. Malinowski of the Capital Planning Committee. And Jason, I saw you a second ago. And now I just see your name. Are you there? And are you gonna come back? And there we go. All right. And it looks very nice where you are.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you? Okay, awesome.
All right.
I had, I had to move for an unstable internet connection, so hopefully this is better. Just start waving at me if you can't hear me for whatever reason. So.
All right, I'm turning things over to you.
All right, sounds good. So we technically have a posted meeting, but I do not see a quorum in the audience, so I am not going to call that meeting to order. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna share my screen. There was a, there was a presentation kit, but I'll walk through it quickly and then pause for any sort of questions. Vanessa, I don't have the ability to share it, so if you could pull it up.
Okay.
That would, that would help. But while she pulls that up, I think as you all know, obviously, one of you in Ms. Brashow sits on the Capital Planning Committee, and I think a lot of you have either joined our meetings or made mention in your BOS meetings about, you know, what we have been up to, but I figured it'd be important to give you a formal update, and there are some actions that we are gonna ask of you at the end of this evening, just to, you know, keep our progress moving.
Jason, I made you a co-host, excuse me, because I don't have your files.
Standby.
Hopefully you'll be able to share your screen at this point.
Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm just gonna start on this slide because I think it's important, not for who you have appointed, but for who you haven't appointed. We do have an open seat. And when I look at the membership that we have as a committee, we would greatly benefit, you know, for those that are in the audience or watch a replay of this meeting from someone with construction or and/or engineering expertise to join us as the seventh member. We have a wealth of financial expertise in a wealth of individuals that have a variety of backgrounds, especially within town government, and serving on other boards and committees to add. But I would, I would say, you know, anything you can do to recruit members and obviously as the appointing body of our committee would be greatly appreciated. This slide summarizes what we've done to date. As you know, you formed us in March and you're meeting right before, you know, the world changed in front of us. And so we had a little delayed start, but we met in early April. We actually have not actually met in person as a committee yet. And obviously, we don't see that changing anytime soon. But I think the benefit of that is for anyone that hasn't been following what we're doing and really wants to get into the nitty gritty details, all of our videos are posted on the town website. But also, more importantly, you know, our minutes reflected and have been posted with town clerk and are up to date. And special thanks to Jeff Hark, who has served as our clerk since joining the committee and the notes are very detailed and I'm confident are accurate in terms of what we have discussed and where we're going as committee. We've met with all department heads at least once, most more than once, other than the schools. I'll get back to schools. We were able to, because of the delayed timing of the annual town meeting, make a recommendation on everything but the Finn boiler. So we felt like, and I just looked at how many times I had to get up at the microphone to clarify a few things at that meeting. We were able to make some quick progress through that, which was not expected based on the timing of when we got formed and the fact that we were formed technically in and around the same time that the annual town meeting should have happened absent the pandemic. We've already done an initial review of all FY22 capital items. That's both been done by the committee as well as with department heads. The good news is it's trending much more positively than the five-year outlook you saw a couple of months ago. And our goal is that we plan to make a recommendation on the FY22 capital in and around October to both you and advisory with the goal of solidifying that before you head into the details of the operational budget. We've also started to come up with a preliminary 10-year capital plan. And, you know, that's still in flux, but mainly has been through the interaction of mainly department heads, and I'll get to what we're gonna do other than department heads in a moment. I apologize, I have a helicopter just over my shoulder. So if you can't hear me, just scream and yell at me, but, and then we've also made significant reductions in the capital expenses without denying any expenses. What we've done is we've basically taken the capital plan that we did inherit and streamlined it in such a way to get it to be what I'll call more realistic before we actually have to start to make some tough decisions. So again, the good news is as of now, we're trending in the right direction in that if you were to have looked at 10-year outlook when we started with the capital plan as compared to now, we're in a much better spot because of what we know we can and can't do. Now, there are some items that are missing that are not even contemplated in the plan that we're gonna have to account for, but at least we've done some initial cuts without having to candidly make any tough decisions at this point. We've also had a lot of discussions around revolving accounts. You know, because those do fund capital expenditures in a lot of instances. We've primarily focused on ambulance and recreation. Right now, we are very close to having a report. You approved the, this report, you know, the funding for this report a couple of months ago related to the exterior and window engineering. And we do plan to submit that to CPC at some point. I think a lot of the timing around that will hinge on your decision for a fall town meeting tonight. So that is one item I'll just flag to you that if you do choose to proceed with holding a fall town meeting, that may be an item that, you know, we bring forward to CPC and then hopefully CPC would approve and bring forward. This has been an item that's on the capital plan for many, many years. The, the level of engineering that was needed to submit something to CPC has never been done or funded, so we're looking forward to having the opportunity to present this and hopefully get a favorable result and then bring it forward to town meeting. The goal with this item is we've bundled a lot of items over the next four years into one package. Right? And, and we may have to splice it up depending upon CPC's view of certain items. But at the bare minimum, we think economies of scale of bidding, very similar to, you know, what we do with public safety in golf in terms of there were CPC articles, there were separate town meeting funding for golf, but we got economies of scale by having the same contractor do it all at the same time. That's something we're looking at. We're doing a detailed review of solid waste disposal options to determine the appropriate next steps. So there's significant capital related to the transfer station that's needed. But what we thought was important was let's determine whether that capital is needed or not, depending on candidly where you as a board wanna go with solid waste disposal going forward. Mr. Butler, who I think most of you are very familiar with in town and from his time on the advisory committee, was gracious enough to volunteer to do what I'll call a very independent detailed analysis of, of the options that exist. We're planning to get a readout on that on August 31st. At our 7:00 PM meeting, that's being solely devoted to that. It will be recorded, but I think there will be a lot of actions coming out of that that we're gonna need, you know, the BOS to make some definitive decisions on in terms of how you wanna fund and operate that facility going forward so that we can then do the necessary work related to any capital based on that decision. So more to come on that. We've been working with both the library board of trustees and library director to monitor library design and construction grant cycles. Right now, there's approximately 20 libraries or so in the state that are still on a waitlist from a grant cycle four years ago that are still waiting for funding. The good news is there seems to be a lot of traction about getting them that funding and getting it released. But obviously, there's a lot of politics around that as well. But we wanna be ready to go once that happens. We're also working with the Council on Aging to address the senior center needs. I know they had put forward a very persuasive proposal related to Quarterville Hall. What we are trying to do before we move that angle forward, and that is slated as an FY22 capital item, is make sure Quarterville Hall is part of our overall facility list moving forward, right? Or, and/or do other buildings become available to us? That would make sense to bundle the center with other apartment. As all of you know, the school committee has had some very, very tough decisions. And it'll be, been spending a lot of time during the summer on things that they probably never imagined they would be discussing. Nonetheless, we have had a few conversations with Mr. Challen, who's now the South Row School Committee Chair about how to advance and understand the school's capital needs over the, the next 10 years. We've gotten their capital plan, but candidly, there's a lot more work to be done, and I'm very confident that they, I've talked to Mr. Challen as late as this afternoon. I'm very confident that they will be coming forward to work with us soon on what the future of those four schools looks like in terms of what renovations, what new construction, or what consolidation may be able to occur. I think all of those options are on the table. The nearest term items in terms of their, their capital plan is there significant capital coming as early as this year related to Niri? What we wanna do is make sure that that's money well spent and that there's not a broader Niri project that needs to be taken care of soon. So we've tried to be very respectful of the schools, but at the same time, understand that we need their buy-in pretty soon to move this forward. And tomorrow, we will be sending out, it's already ready on, on the town website, a form for, for the public to just weigh in on what they would like to see in a capital plan. So this is really kinda leaving the existing infrastructure off to the side because we're already working through a lot of that. You know, is there something that we don't have? And I know Concepts of Community Center, I think if you look at the master plan, which did a very similar reach out, right, and got a couple hundred responses, there was a lot of discussion around a community pool. You know, we'd like to understand what's on the table, not necessarily make a decision on viability yet, but ultimately, all of these things that are brought forward in an ultimate capital plan will be based on financial viability. So as you all know, the initial genesis for a fall town meeting was, was around capital, right? It didn't ever anticipate, you know, a lot of the items that were deferred from spring town meeting. And no one ever anticipated we'd be in a pandemic for as long as we are. So what I want you to be aware of tonight, when you make your decision, is what I, if you choose to hold a special town meeting in the fall, what items would be brought forward from a capital perspective? And if we do not do a fall town meeting, what would fall to the annual town meeting? And thus, the FY22 tax rate, which I think is already under a lot of pressure. So the Capital Planning Committee had actually recommended the hook lift truck be part of the spring town meeting, but it was too late to change the warrant because the warrant had already been printed before we were formed. So this is an item that's critical to DPW's operations. The, the existing one that's replacing is likely gonna be sitting in a garage this winter and not actually used. So I think it's really important that you understand that this item is gonna have to go forward at least at next spring's town meeting, but should be considered this fall if you're gonna hold the town meeting. We also had recommended deferring the fire chief's vehicle so we could do some more due diligence on that. While we haven't taken a formal vote of support yet, it's trending that way, you know, pending the economic environment that town finds itself in. You know, coming out of FY20, I know there's still a readout scheduled on actuals for that as well as, you know, where we're headed for FY21 in terms of revenue, et cetera. And then also, the fire department has been actively seeking a SCBA grant through FEMA. They're in year two of their submission, year one, they did not get it awarded. We will know by the middle of September, that's the latest from FEMA, whether this grant is actually gonna be awarded to South Row or not. The grant is about $250,000, but there is a matching component to it. So what we wanted to do is get funding in place now so that if the chief was awarded in the department, the grant, that would be able to take advantage of the grant funding without having to go through reserve fund transfers, et cetera. Of course, I think this is the item that if it had to pass, right, if we had to leave something off, right, we could probably find, find this through operations or reserve fund. I don't think anyone's gonna let $250,000 of grant funding, you know, disappear for a $13,000 match that the town would have to factor in. I will also point out that FEMA has been waiving certain match on random grant programs. It's been arbitrary at best, but I've been following it pretty closely, and that is also a potential. When you think about the financial outlook of the town, there are some capital expenditures, namely interior renovations to the library and town hall, townhouse that would greatly benefit from actually being accelerated to a fall town meeting. Again, if it was held, because of, if you just think about the operational impact on the buildings and the fact that there's less people in these buildings than there ever will be in the future, we may be able to obviously get, you know, efficiencies on the actual expenditure while also thinking through, you know, lack of operational impact. And then, as I mentioned previously, if you were to move forward with a fall town meeting, this would ultimately be a CPC sponsored article, but the townhouse exterior and windows. I know in your packet, there was a listing of other items that chairs of committees and residents had submitted that were sponsors of citizen petitions. South Union, which we'll get to, I don't think that that's gonna be ready for fall town meeting. But I know that was at the time that Mark had sent out the initial request. So this is what capital would look for someone to sponsor if you were to move forward. When you look forward to FY22, I've already talked, though, you know, we expect to come before you in October. We've already gained consensus on most of them. There's a few items that we have mainly DPW related that we need some more information on. But I think it's really important to caution that FY22, you're gonna see an uptick in capital expenditures. You know, obviously, subject to town meeting approval. But we're gonna see that level of trend for the next few years. There's been some significant items that were deferred, especially vehicles and equipment and road maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, et cetera, that, you know, we intend to try to catch up, but obviously, all of this is gonna be taken with a lens of, you know, what is the, the financial outlook of the town is, and we're constantly open and adaptable to that. But what we wanna do is solidify what we think should move forward. And then obviously, we can pull things back as an absolute last resort, depending on where the finances are falling. Once you get through the operational budget, what we don't wanna do is have you vetting capital and operational at the same time, because we all know what happens with a lot of those items is very easy to go to the capital schedule and say, well, this one can wait, et cetera. We're trying to say this is ready versus this can wait so that you're not even having to make those sorts of decisions. We've already done, I'll call it a more detailed analysis and can think through that. Now, this, this is kind of the bigger item that we've spent some time on. And we have taken a formal vote at this point. We, we would like your board to start exploring the potential disposal of this property. We don't know where it'll land, obviously requires your support to bring forward an article to town meeting. And it requires, you know, negotiations on your, your end, should that actually pass the town meeting. But the main reasons for recommending this are the potential to generate cash to fund future capital needs. We think we have an ability, both short and long term, to find permanent homes for the two departments that reside in that building in terms of recreation and youth and family, but also enhance their space longer term. And in design space, that's in line with what their visions are, not necessarily what they naturally inherited. And we also think that it would remove a building from kind of our annual operating expenses. We have quotes of about $37,000 a year in terms of the operating expenses. And when we also look at our capital plan, there's a significant amount of money that we need to go into maintaining this building moving forward that we don't just, at this point, do not see as well spent. Realizing that this decision goes far beyond, obviously, our committee. It's easy to make a decision based on purely finances. We have solicited feedback from the Recreation Commission, Youth Commission, Historical Commission, and CHOPSI. We've given them a deadline of 8:31 to make some, you know, to submit something formally. I think you're in receipt of what Historical had sent us. And Youth and Family and Recreation have both sent letters more along the lines of their temporary space needs and what they would like to see maintained. But nothing to date has, no one has said we are strongly opposed to exploring this. But they have listed out kind of what they would like the considerations to be should they have to inhabit temporary space. CHOPSI is meeting next week, and I know Ms. Brashow made the recommendation to our committee that they at least have a chance to weigh in, given the potential for affordable housing. So I think you'll have more feedback and we'll bundle it together so that you have it, you know, before you have to make a final decision. But I think all we're looking for tonight for you is to authorize us to obtain an appraisal on the property. But obviously, we wouldn't recommend obtaining an appraisal on the property if you don't see yourself ever wanting to dispose of this property. Right? So I think they kinda go hand in hand with what you know about the property, what it's used for, and what it could use, be used for, given what we're facing in front of us. Where we're going, these are, again, items that will be on our future agendas that have not been vetted by the committee yet, is retaining an owner's project manager on, on some sort of retainer. We obviously had an owner's project manager and required to for the public safety building. But, you know, we're gonna be making big decisions that have interlinking dependencies upon them. And it's important to have that, that sort of guidance of how any sort of bid process would work, how we should be thinking about things, how construction process would work in, in a, in the public sector. So we will be discussing that. We've been very focused on grant opportunities and shovel-ready projects. I think you're all aware of the Shared Streets proposal that came before you a couple of months ago. You know, our view, and it's come up by almost every single member at this point, is this town doesn't have enough shovel-ready projects. And no one has a crystal ball to understand where the government, both federal and state, are gonna go with grant programs. But we need to be ready to what we're trying to do, and I think the townhouse is the best example. We're trying to get projects that are really close to ready, getting them ready. I think we have a lot more discussions that we need to have with DPW because they have a lot of projects upcoming that we really need to just have ready to go, depending on what, what opportunities. And then, as many of you are aware, there used to be stabilization fund and a lot of discussions around that. We, we plan to refresh the dialogue. I don't know where we're go, go on that. But I think that is an item that we have for the future. So in closing, here are kind of the, the items that we would appreciate, you know, either feedback or formal motions on tonight. One is you had a revised charge in your packet, more to formalize our timeline, but this kind of serves as an initial report. And then we owe you a final report by the end of the calendar year. The main reason, as I noted before, that the holdup on the, the full report is rules, and obviously, they have buildings that we may want if they don't need. And vice versa, they also have significant needs at schools like Niri that we need to more fully vet. I think you'll, you'll get, give us the next one in terms of, you'll give clarity on whether there's a fall town meeting or not, and also some, some reaction to the FY22 timeline in terms of whether you'll be ready to kind of start to hear about the FY22 capital needs in October and whether you're willing to make some decisions then and, and, you know, hold the line absent, you know, sort of emergency conditions from a financial perspective. A reaction to South Union in support for obtaining a proposal if you're interested in pursuing further. I know you won't be joining live, but watch the Capital Planning Meeting on 8:31 regarding the transfer station, because I think we'll be trying to get on your agenda shortly after we take a position coming out of that. We have asked Public Works Planning Board, given their role in that, to join as well. I know they haven't posted yet, but they may be. We'd strongly advocate a, a, an increased focus on grant funding. And I know there was discussion at your goal-setting meetings around a grant writer. But more focus on empowering or, or, or directing the department heads to come up with their priorities. And I think we have a lot of people in our community that would be willing to help if, if the department head is not fully equipped or doesn't have the capacity to do that. But this is the way we're gonna solve a lot of our capital needs and maybe turn some projects that are more wishes into actual projects going forward. Without grants and trying to fund it solely through tax, tax revenue, I don't see all the things the town wants becoming a reality without all of our tax bills going up exponentially. And then obviously, we'd welcome any questions or comments on the general direction the community's headed. So I think I will stop sharing my screen and turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Jason, thanks very much. What I am gonna do is I'm gonna run through your requests pretty quickly before I open it up to everybody on the committee. The first has to do with the revised charge. I mean, it's an interesting question. I don't have a problem with the charge that you have proposed. But I took a look at the sort of the statutory basis for what we can do, and we've, we created you folks as an ad hoc committee. And among other things, what that allowed us to do is have Ms. Cook on it. Because the town bylaws don't allow advisory committee members to be on committees, but they can be on ad hoc committees. I think it's pretty clear from your work, and it's, it's equally clear from sort of the presentation you've made tonight, that there are a lot of capital questions in both the short, medium, and, and always long-term for the town. Which means a report in December or thereabouts when you're proposing is fine. But there's gonna be, I think, a need for a longer discussion about creating not an ad hoc committee, but a more permanent committee. And that obviously creates some issues for the, the representation on the, on the committee. So maybe at some point, not right now, but.
Yeah, to be clear, there's three out of our six members currently advise members, myself.
Three, okay. So, but it's a problem because, I mean, the, the, the town bylaws are very specific that advisory members can't be on another committee. And an ad hoc. And an ad hoc committee is fine for a short period of time with a very focused agenda. But it, it feels like we're sidestepping the bylaw if we essentially have a permanent ad hoc committee. So that's something that needs to be discussed, and I think the, the, I don't think we have to resolve it tonight, obviously, but the longer term. You're right about the town meeting. We're going to talk about that later on. I hope we have clarity about that at the end of the meeting tonight. I've also had some discussions with Mr. Challen about South Union. Obviously, going to hear from the other board members, it strikes me as, as a no-brainer in terms of whether or not we get an appraisal. My only suggestion would be is that it's two appraisals, based on what we heard from Historical. One, without taking into consideration the, the, the factors that Historical pointed out in terms of, of, of the possibility of a restriction, and one with the, if a restriction were to be, you know, carried on the property. Watching your meeting, it's always fun. So I think that's a, that's an easy one. The grant funding focus, I, I think you're going to get general agreement from the folks on the committee about that. And in fact, one of the things we talked about was to, you know, basically have a shelf lined up with the various departments and otherwise for shovel-ready projects. Because at least until Charlie Baker is no longer governor, that's a big focus of the way he governs, is through grants and a focus on shovel-ready. So I think that, that the focus you folks have come up with is, is, is right on that respect. So that's my sort of run-through of the, of trying to respond to some of your requests for, for information, et cetera. But obviously, there's four other folks who are going to weigh in and, and have their own views as well. So Ms. Braschio, how about starting off with you?
Because I sit on Capitol, Marty, is it okay if I go last, just to make sure that everyone has their questions and everything answered?
Sure. I'm going to jump around alphabetically, Mr. Stivers.
Thanks. I have followed the capital planning committee meetings pretty closely. And I think, Jason, you and your group are doing a great job in terms of bringing focus to a number of these issues. I, again, pretty much in alignment with the chairman's comments on this. I think that short-term adjusting the charge is useful, but thinking longer term about how we get the right components on the committee in a way that doesn't violate the town bylaws would be very helpful. I'm also in favor of a couple of appraisals for South Union. Not clear yet what the best next step is, but that's an important thing to start with, at least to see what that turns up. And so, you know, again, I, I'm supportive of all of these things.
And I'm assuming, Sam, that it was music to your ears to hear the talk about grant writing.
I wonder who came up with that. That was a great idea.
To be clear, to get a grant, you have to have a project.
No, exactly. There, there, there is some symbiosis there. Brian, how about Wayne with you next?
Yep, sure. Agree with a lot of the comments that have been made so far. One question that I do have with respect to the transfer station study, and maybe Mark, you need to weigh in on this. I believe that Karen had an item in her budget this year to undertake a study of the transfer station. Do you know if that has started yet?
So that was something that the focus was changed in the final warrant before we went to town meeting. The focus was changed that that money was being targeted towards the capital planning committee. With the, was still with the focus to be used, you know, for that purpose and other purposes that they may, the committee may need. I know that the committee has kind of had John Butler doing a lot of that work pro bono. So I'm not sure that, you know, we're going to need that money, and he has been working with Karen. I understand it's been a, you know, it's been a good working relationship, a lot of give and take. And so I think the results of that will come out on the thirty-first.
Okay, that, that really was one of the questions I had, is whether the study that was envisioned as part of her initial budget proposal is being incorporated into the work that's being done so far on it. So I look forward to watching that meeting on the, on the thirty-first. And just one, I also agree with the appraisals on South Union School Building. I will just point out, I mean, lessons learned from Fayetteville Hall, where one of the bullet items that you had, Jason, mentioned that this would provide us the opportunity to fund other capital items. I will just note that, obviously Fayetteville Hall had restrictions that Town Meeting wanted, which I think impacted the dollar value that we're able to get for Fayetteville, for Fayetteville Hall. So that's just something that we're going to need to, really as a whole community, you know, decide. I certainly appreciate and understand the concerns Historical has, but that could very well impact the, you know, the value of, that others who would be interested in purchasing the South Union School have. So just to keep that in mind.
I think that's a fair comment, Brian. I'd say message received compared to Fayetteville, but we're also hoping the different property, different size, different acreage, et cetera. So there's hopefully additional opportunities that may present themselves.
No, understood. Completely separate properties, but be interesting to see how it all plays out.
Are you all set, Brian? All right, Ms. Malinowski, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Malinowski?
I have one question. Do you have dollar figures tied to the three capital items that were pushed off? I know the SCBA is thirteen thousand, but what are the other two?
Chief's vehicle is sixty thousand. And the hook lift truck is a combination, a portion from the water fund of approximately sixty thousand and a portion from the general fund of a hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Lisa, before I, I shift over to you, let me just follow up on that with Mr. Malinowski. I expect that in an hour or so, we're going to hear from the town clerk that there are significant logistical issues about having a special town meeting in the fall. They, they, they may be so significant that our decision is really kind of easy. Although I'll, I'll, I'll wait to hear more directly from Mr. Hagerty about that, but I got a little bit of a preview this afternoon. In terms of the items you identified as capital items for a fall town meeting, if there were one, are there, you listed some of the risks, and I understand those, but, but how significant are the risks for not making any of those capital expenditures in the fall and holding them for the five or six months until the, again, when I think the spring town meeting would be?
So, so I think the risk, oh, that, that, that the pricing will change, right? So the pricing of the chief's vehicle, we're, we're actually seeing it with police vehicles now, but the same, we true, same type of vehicles that police usually buy. Pricing is going up, not down, because of obviously all the, the automakers had to deal with respirators for so long. So they got so backed up in terms of inventory, so their supply was down. So I think the vehicle prices will go up right across the board. The SCBA thing is, thing is easily managed through reserve fund or operational. I think everyone in town would find a way to make that work and chip in. So I think that, that's the biggest risk is cost, is everything's just going to go up. And it's probably going to cause you to push something in the FY twenty-two capital plan out. And what you're going to do there is create a situation where your tax rate is artificially going to go, not artificially, it's actually going to go up a lot more than people are going to want. So then you're going to be sitting in your, your normal spot of, we have a capital need that everyone knows has to occur and needs to happen. But it puts so much pressure on the tax rate that we have to pull it back, right? And then it will back up everything we have FY twenty-three and on. Now, I'm also aware of the current world we're living in, and I wouldn't advocate to call a special town meeting just for these things. Chief Achilles may have a different view on, on the vehicle. But I know Karen has already said on the hook lift truck, even if we approve it this fall, she's not going to take delivery on it in time for the-
This winter?
Well, yeah, so-
Okay.
Those, those are your risks, I think, and you're losing the opportunity to take care of items from FY twenty-two when all these buildings are closed or partially occupied, which you can, and Mark can speak better to the operational impact. But having a library that's closed and taking care of something that there's general consensus around just makes a lot of sense, but I know you don't have the room in your current operating budget to just do what you need to bring forward a warrant article. So that's what you have in front of you, but I, I get the, the complications that Mr. Hagerty and others and you are going to have to deal with.
Okay. All right, Ms. Braschio.
Thank you. Actually, I wanted to wait and see where the questions were going and where the comments were going, Marty. So I'm actually fine. I, I think it went exactly as I expected. So thank you to Jason.
All right, Jason, so I guess the, in, in terms of, other than the discussion that's coming up, the, you submitted a proposed revised charge. And as I said in my initial remarks, I am fine with that. And I'm assuming that, that at, at least you'd like to leave with that revised charge approved tonight.
Yeah, I, I thought it was cleaner to submit it that way, so that there's an understanding of when, you know, I wished I was sitting here in front of you telling you where we're going with the schools. But we also were, I think, diplomatic about how we handled it in terms of not pushing the schools into another discussion, given how upside down their world has been turned. So I, I think it's, it's complete to do a charge, but I wouldn't be offended if you don't vote in favor of the charge because I think you know where we're at, and I'm not hearing any objections to where we're going.
Does, does anyone have any objections to, number one, considering the, the charge, the change in charge tonight that's been proposed? I don't see any.
Ready for a vote?
So Mr. Stivers has moved?
I, I moved. We approved the revised charter.
I'll second that.
That's what I thought I heard, discussion. All right, by roll, all those in favor, Ms. Braschio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski? Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. It's unanimous. Mr. Malinowski, you have your revised charge.
Thank you.
And just, Jason, I guess one final thing, because I have, I've had a couple of conversations with, with Roger Challen as well. Do you see a, a, I mean, at some point, obviously those, and again, you're absolutely right. The school people have more than enough on their plate, at least for the next, you know, six weeks or so. But, but have you thought about a structure for discussions? And again, what we're talking about is, is the, the, an eight hundred, eight hundred pound gorilla that's been in the, the room in Southborough for a while, and that is whether it makes sense to continue to have four schools or to do something significant with Neary and have three schools with presumably Woodward taking on a different posture. Do you have, have you thought about what the structure of, of discussions along those lines would be?
So, so where it's at is Mr. Challen needs to add an, a agenda item to a upcoming school committee meeting to determine what his other four members, so the total school committee in Southborough, whether they, how involved they want to be, you know, especially given that this is, you know, what he has committed that they, they will not get in the way of advancing this discussion. While they're obviously going to have many obstacles to face, you know, in the fall and winter timeframe here. So he just needs to formally have a discussion and open meeting before I can answer that question. But I think there's, there's really two avenues. Is capital planning will, will lead with it, and school committee members will attend our meetings if they want, but there would be a formal readout to school committee on, on our findings and let them decide whether it's something they want to push forward with. Or we may have to come to you to set up a subcommittee that would consist of some capital planning members and some school committee members. I, I view the ball in, in school committees court of how involved they want to be in, in the process. But obviously, we're also going to need access to the school administration to get the appropriate data.
Okay, great. Thanks very much, and I think we can let you go for the evening.
Just, I guess, one final question, I'll defer to Mark. Do we need a motion on the appraisal?
I think it'd be good if the board, you know, took a formal motion on authorizing the, authorizing the capital planning committee to seek appraisals for the property. I mean, the selectmen do control all of the, all of the buildings. So I think it would be good for capital planning to have that formal direction.
So moved?
So moved.
So seconded.
Discussion.
I just have one question. When the appraisal is done, will the playground be included as part of the appraisal?
So based on feedback from Recreation, our understanding is that playground could actually be repurposed elsewhere in town if we were to. So I think, you know, we would work with Mark and whoever the firm is that we use for this sort of services to scope that out. And I think I've heard direction that we want two appraisals. One to align with the historic email and one to align with no restrictions, if I'm hearing this correctly.
Thank you.
And, and Jason, you are. Yeah, and, and again, fitting it into the, I, I, who knows? I could be, I'm not a, I'm not a property expert by any means. But with, with Fayetteville, I, I think the without restriction number was modest compared to what I suspect the without restriction number might be for South Union. And again, the town ultimately is going to make a decision on that if it makes sense for the town to consider selling it. But I think it's important to know what the, what, what the difference is between with restriction and without restriction in terms of the value of that property. All right, any additional discussion on the motion? All right, Ms. Braschio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. It is unanimous. So the request for appraisals, to get two of them, has been approved by the Board of Selectmen. So now I think you're done.
All right, appreciate all your time.
All right.
Really appreciate the collaboration with this board, other boards, and the department heads that have helped us get to this point.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Ms. Hale, is Mr. Ballantyne lurking out there somewhere?
He is. Just popped him in. There he is.
I think you need to pop-
He's coming.
There we go. And Brian, are you going to have visuals for us on, or are we just going to hear you report on ClearGov?
Yeah, I should be mostly just talking. Tom may have a visual or two, I'm not sure on his little piece of it, but I'm just going to be speaking to it. So-
Okay, so you're, you, you are scheduled to give us an update on the ClearGov budget software that is going to make everybody's lives easier and more effective, right?
We definitely hope so. So-
All right. All right.
ClearGov was a solution that was first brought to us in the fall of 2019, I believe. And we did some research and did some demos, did some checkups. And in the December, January timeframe, we applied for a grant for this solution from the state to defray the first year expenses. And thankfully, we've got, we got that. So basically, ClearGov is a software that has a couple of different areas to it. One of the big ones that I'll be speaking to at least is the budget area. It also is largely known for transparency. And transparency in the area of visual formats that- and transparency in the area of visual formats that you can put on your website where the community and residents can go to and look at all sorts of data. It's like peer comparisons, demographics, financial information on the town. They grab other stuff from the state archives and websites such as labor statistics, just about everything about your community that, you know, that you can think of statistically. So they're very well-known for that. So it's a two-piece sort of software that we're excited to kind of learn about more and get involved in. So during the spring and into the summer, we managed, when we weren't busy with town meeting and all the other stuff, we managed to upload a bunch of data to that software as far as our budgets from fiscal 15 through fiscal 20, I think it would have been. We are now currently working on employing fiscal 21, which shouldn't really take that long. It's not a very long process, a couple of weeks, because you've got to check the data pretty close. So the town accountant is doing that. So basically, this is a trifecta group of the IT director, myself and the town accountant, shepherding this along with the town administrator assisting as we need them. So I did send a couple of just rough samples over to you as far as the budgeting module, you know, a couple of sheets that you could look at. You can see the homepage, which actually shares the transparency area too. And you can see a few other sheets that just, I just wanted to have you visualize, have a visual where you could see how you can drill down. A large part of this software is where you take things in an upper level, say revenues, expenses, general government, public safety, and you can keep drilling down into, you know, departments, line items, and then beyond that too. So it's fairly interesting. The big thing about the budget side of it is, as you know, right now, we have an Excel-based budgeting process where we send out the budget request to every department head every year by email. Then we get them back, then we talk about it, or we look if there's errors, we go back and forth, and we do all this by email and Excel. This is meant to replace that. And basically, the way it works, and I'll keep it very high level, but basically, the way it works is probably myself or someone at Town Hall will send out requests to the departments in a, through ClearGov, and they automatically shoot an email to all the department heads and request them to enter a budget. And when the department head is done, they will acknowledge that, you know, they're finished entering. That sends another message back to me that it's done, you can look at it. You can approve, you can, there's actually an approval process, and I want to be careful that we're not, you know, they call it approval. So if I approve a budget, it can't be changed. That's more the purpose of it. So, you know, I can't see the, you know, council on aging budget as a thousand dollars one day and five thousand dollars the next, because they went in and changed something, it kind of locks it down. So I just want to be clear, I'm not approving budgets. That's not my role, obviously. So, but there is, it's like an approval process. There's all sorts of other little intricacies you can do about sending messaging back and forth with questions, and the department head is able to attach files if they want or attach commentary. It's pretty neat. It has a lot of little knickknacks that we're still learning about. So the plan, I'm sure this is more what you're anxious to hear about. So the plan, obviously, now that we're in the third week of August, and we only have a week and a half left or so of, you know, of this month, we're hoping to, in the next few days, we'll probably get a plan together to reach out to the departments and get a training schedule for them, because they're going to have to know how to obviously access the software and, you know, get to a point where they can enter their budget. It's not a very, on that level, it's not very complicated. It's something new, and I think the department heads, as with anything new, it's going to be a learning year. It's going to be a learning year for myself also. So we're going to, you know, as we go through it, we'll see the little quirks. I'm sure there'll be little quirks too. And, you know, we'll work through them, but that's going to happen fairly soon. So we'll come up with a schedule, we'll have some training, we'll work through follow-up. The good news is, this company offers unlimited training, so so far, they've been great to, at least back and forth to work with. We'll make sure that that stays that way. And, you know, as a team, we'll work through it. And last year, the budgets were due, I want to say the third week of October. So that's basically two months away. So we got our work cut out for us, but I think we should be able to, I think we should be able to manage it. And, you know, the other, again, the other side is the transparency side. Now, you know, if you want to follow up on any of the budget stuff with me, you could obviously ask me that now, or if you want to hear from Tom and then ask us both questions, you could do that also. But that's basically what I got to update you, or where we are at least.
All right, I'm going to, I mentioned this earlier, but I'm off-site, I'm down in New Jersey, and I'm dealing with technology I'm not completely familiar with. So I had to switch from one computer to the next, but people aren't saying you're unmuted, or so I'm assuming that people can hear me. Okay. I'm going to leave it to some other folks to ask you some more detailed questions. I'm just, I've got one sort of major one. And from our perspective, whether, in other words, if we got the training and learned to use the system, but even if we didn't, on a, even every meeting if we wanted to, but on a monthly basis, I'm assuming this means we could, you could generate reports for exactly where the budget stands for particular departments using this tool. Am I right about that?
That's correct. And so basically, we, and we haven't sorted this out how specifically this will work, but you could set up people who want to just go in and view budgets. That could include even yourself, you know, if you wanted to. I'm not sure you want to, but you could, or you could get reports. It does bring up a question of how broad we want to make that available. I would say as broad as is practicable, you know? But yes, it does have the ability to do that, and that's one of the nice things about it. It's a centralized area. It's not a bunch of 50 Excel sheets residing on a drive that I have to access, or you guys can access, or whoever can access. So it's a little different, and it's a whole different field. So, but yes, that's the answer to your question.
Yeah, I mean, my guess is we're going to end up using this, relying on this in ways that, for both current fiscal year and future fiscal year, that we're not, that at least I'm not entirely sure of right now. So Ms. Malinowski, why don't I start off with you this time?
Good, thank you. Can you explain how the expenses flow over into this? Is it in real time? Or is it nightly? Or kind of what's the process for that?
No, so it's not in real time. We're not connected to, so we have our own financial software. We're not connected to that. Now, that being said, one of the transparency options is to have a visual, public showing of your expenses. That could almost be done, I'm not sure it could be done in real time, but it could be done through just a simple download, as I understand, from our financial software. So I would imagine the same thing is true for the, you know, for general expenses also. Because you can pretty much, from what we've learned so far, all the budgets that they've now loaded have been just downloads from our current budget software. Like I said, it's fairly straightforward, but it's not, it's not real time, though. We're not there yet.
And if I may add, you know, in practicality, we don't operate really real time per se. Maybe the revenues change daily, but expenses, we have a warrant schedule that, you know, checks are cut every other week, maybe every week. So it might be something that we can add to that process, depending on how complex it is to get the reports and whatnot.
So how are you going to tie out to the ledger to make sure that what the town accountant has is loaded into your software?
Yeah, she'll have reports that you can generate that can just compare to the finance reports from the financial data. I don't think that's going to be a, that shouldn't be a big issue. So as we did with the budgets, loading the budgets on, we were able just to compare the two sides through running simple reports. It was pretty easy.
Okay. And is there a way to flag expenses that we're tracking to apply for the CARES Act for COVID related for FY21?
I don't know. That's a good question. I don't know. I know you can flag certain things on the budget side. I don't know if you could do it on the expense side, but I can find that out.
Okay, that would be great. I'm just thinking, even, you know, you're booking something to a department, let's say it's BOS, for example, and you know that you want to put it on your CARES Act list, but you still obviously want to carry it on your ledger under that. But it'd be nice to know if you could just run a report and say, here are all of our COVID expenses. Put in for.
Yep.
Okay, and can you just, generally speaking, who's going to have access to the system? And I assume it's going to be different levels of access with read-only versus added, and kind of what you talked about with the approval process of you actually accepting it to lock down fields. So can you kind of just give the general groups of who's going to have access?
Well, this is, and Tom, you can correct me if I say anything wrong, but, so this is fairly common in softwares now where you can have different stratas of users. So, you know, you have an administrator, and then you have maybe a person like a, well, in this example, it would be like an administrator, a department head, and then someone who's like a read-only person. So you can, and you can further restrict them to certain departments. So I can't go in and change the town clerk's budget, you know, that's their, that's their little area that they can go in and do whatever, but I can't. So it's going to be, it's going to be set up like that. I think, you know, there won't be very many administrators, obviously. It'll probably be, you know, whether it's the town administrator or Tom or myself, probably that's the three. As far as department heads, that's pretty self-explanatory. It gets down to the next level where we have readers, which, you know, how many do we want to have? And, you know, because each one that you assign, you're going to have to train. So I think we're going to, we're going to do some reaching out. We're going to also reach out to the department heads and see, you know, in each department, who needs to be in this? I mean, should it be only the department head? Or in a larger department like the police, does it make more sense to have the person do, really doing the budget there? Not the chief. I mean, I can't imagine he's going to have the time or the, or the willingness to have some full access or whatever. So, so yeah, so we can do that, and like I said, we'll be doing a little bit of work to figure out the different groups in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is, will capital items be tracked here too?
So here's the thing about the capital that I learned. It's, you can do capital on a year-to-year basis, but like a budget, budgetary year, you can put in your capital items and have them, you know, as part of your proposed budget, which is good. It's kind of a necessary thing, right? The bad thing is, is you can't, there's no, it's not quite set up to be a capital improvement program. So I don't see this, and I haven't seen enough yet to make a final decision, but I don't think it's going to replace the capital plan we have in place now. However, that being said, they just, this same company just came out with a budget book. The town administrator will love that, a budget book. And it's supposed to be an automated, obviously, budget book, but part of it is a CIP. So, and I'm sure this could work with, in conjunction with the budget tool also. So I'm kind of, this was just very recently, so literally in the next, last few months, month or two. So I don't know what it looks like. I don't know if it's something we want to explore. You know, obviously, the capital committee has done a great job setting up their sheets and everything, but I understand that you'd probably want to know, can we take it a step farther? And maybe add to this, and if it's good, why not, right? So I would just say that's something we're going to have to follow up on.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, why don't we go to you, Ms. Brascio? Do you have anything?
Thank you. Only one question, because Chelsea actually asked a couple of the questions that I had. So Brian, do you, is Advisory well aware of some of the uses of the software? And the benefits of the software? Are you going to give them a presentation on what the software can do?
We're definitely going to have to loop them in more. They're obviously aware of the software and aware that it's coming and being rolled out, but we have not spoken to them individually as far as, you know, how can they use this possibly? So, but we're going to have to do that also.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Mr. Shea?
There we go. Excellent. Thank you for that update, Brian. I'm looking forward to seeing this continue to get rolled out and utilized and see how valuable a tool it can be for this upcoming budget process. And beyond that, I don't have any additional questions at this time.
All right, Mr. Styvers?
Thanks. Brian, sounds like a great step forward here, and I'm eager to see how this works. I think that, as you've mentioned, Excel is a wonderful tool, but if you drive it too far in some of these specialized directions, it's really hard to maintain and get the use that you need out of it. So this sounds like a great specialized tool to help us with this process. I'm actually very interested in seeing how this works, and I'd be interested in at least getting read access to this to keep an eye on it as it develops and goes along, because I often will have questions about what's going on with various pieces of the budget. Sometimes it's difficult to track down the right report. So I think that it should be possible to have a number of people have read access as long as 47 people can't write to other people's budgets. But I'd be interested in, again, getting whatever training is necessary to watch this as it goes along, see where it goes. I don't have a lot of specific questions.
Yep.
I think as you see the capabilities, maybe that starts to generate ideas for more current reporting on various things, et cetera, that would be helpful to us. So I try to stay close to it, and I'll stay in touch with you about that.
Okay, we'll keep you in mind.
All right. I do not have anything else. I'm glad to see you guys are dragging us kicking and screaming into the 21st century, so.
Or 20th, anyway.
And look forward to hearing more. All right, I think, nothing else? We're going to let Brian and Tom?
If you want, I can show you real quick how the public view of some of the interface might look.
Oh, terrific.
You know, that's, that's one thing. The other thing I wanted to just touch on is that another powerful tool of the system is the ability to do different forecast models. So if, you know, you think revenues are going to go up exponentially, you know, in three years, you know, you can play with it and see how that, how that will have some impact. So that's something else that we'll, we'll play with as we go. And, you know, I think we're going to take this in small pieces and, you know, move along as best we can. So I'm just going to share my screen real quick. Just run you through. Getting used to a new computer here, so. All right, so you should be able to see the ClearGov website that's branded Town of Southborough?
Yes.
Okay. So the only reason I wouldn't really push this to be really a public link on our, off of our site right now is what Brian alluded to already, and that's that we need to load the 20. off of our site right now, is what Brian alluded to already, and that's that we need to load the 21 budget. Because right now, by default, it just copied the 20 budget, which is obviously not correct. But just real quick, right on the home screen, you have some snapshots, just a little bit of demographic information. You know, very, very broad financial overview, and then some year-over-year graphs of actuals. And, you know, it starts to get into forecasted and things like that. You know, a lot of this data is pulled, like Brian said, from state data. And then down here are the links to free versions of Clergov sites for the public schools and things like that. One of the things I want to point out, though, is that they, they have a formula to indicate similar communities. So I think they use population within 50% plus or minus, and then it might have something to do with the revenue, but I don't remember. We can customize this to put our own kind of market basket communities in there, but those are the ones that come up that, that they'll compare us to by default. Getting into how you can drill down, if you're looking at expenditures, it will actually allow you to customize your own experience. We can do this either by entering a tax bill or I believe your home value. So I asked Brian earlier what number would be good, and I'm going to put in what I believe is the average tax bill. And you can bypass that if you don't want to enter it in. It's not tracked or anything. Okay. Right off the top, you get the pie chart breakdown of how things are split up. You know, then it goes into some general categories. And I'm just going to drill down into general government. So this is my annual contribution based on that tax bill. If I break down, you go down, and now we're in administration. Take a second to generate those. Administration, facilities, finance. So you start getting a little more granular, and I'll just keep on going down here. And you'll see in a minute why I chose this area, and it's not because of selectmen, but we have the, the board of selectmen there. That's, so that's the selectman's office. It's not how much you guys are getting paid for, you know, all your free time. But we have MIS here, okay? And this is why I chose this path, just because I know the information that's in here. All right. So again, I can view the breakdown. I'm going to go ahead and switch to FY19. Okay. And we have our overall expenditure, but then we also have the breakdown to equipment, salaries, and operating expenses. This is, that would be maybe a little bit different for other departments. And again, we have our annual contribution, but now I can also view more details. And now we get into the line item details, and I'm going to have to slide you guys over so I can see. And this is the actual amounts spent because the year has already been closed and updated and uploaded. Okay? If I click on, don't remember, sorry, I promised I wouldn't do things that I hadn't practiced, but if I do FY20, yeah, so it's still budgeted because we have not closed that. So, so that's how you can drill down into the budget now. So it's, right now, it's kind of similar to if we put the budget book from town meeting up with updates from any change that were voted at town meeting. Brian alluded to future possibilities of getting to, getting into the weeds of, you know, each invoice that's paid is, is listed. You know, it's going to be weighing the, the pros and cons of that. You know, I've experienced both sides of if you provide more information, you reduce questions. But then if you provide more information, sometimes you get more questions about, you know, why certain things are the way that they are. So, so that's kind of the very, you know, 5,000-foot view of this and what we can see with it and and how it might be useful to the residents of the town.
And you could do that in Excel on about 30 minutes, right?
Right. Yeah. Actually, you can, we can enable the ability to download the financials, and it puts it into a CSV file, but it's everything, you know, all in one sheet. So, you know, if someone really wanted to start doing some of their own analysis, they really could. But, you know, it's obviously a little more cumbersome that way, but.
Yeah, just looking at that, Tom, I mean, at various times I've dived into the, just looking at the, the way the numbers came up and the like and the categories into the various state websites that, that, that keep this information. And the idea that, that it'll be just readily available for the Town of Southborough instead of having to dig through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is just terrific.
Yeah. And, you know, I think there will be some training and education for the general public of where you might find specific departments, because, you know, I even had a hard time finding my own budget for a little while. Well, is it under other or is it under administration? So, but, you know, that, those are questions that we can put together in an FAQ document or, or something like that. And it's, you know, I can't imagine all 10,000 residents are going to dive into this, but there are some that, that would probably like to get a little bit more clarity for themselves. And it, it might help, like I said, to have an educated audience on, on budget discussions of how things are broken down.
It'll be interesting. Do you think you'll be able to track how many hits, for instance, in the couple of weeks before town meeting? And if that, just.
That, that's a good question. I know there's definitely tools out there to do tracking, but this is, you know, it's a hosted service, so I don't know if, if they have those on there. I would be actually surprised if they are not tracking their traffic.
Yeah, interesting.
I'm sure we might be able to get some of that information from them.
All right, cool. Good stuff. All right. I think now, gentlemen, we will let you go.
All right. Excellent.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next item is a volunteer interview. Ms. Ritchie, Vanessa, are you there again? Is Ms. Ritchie with us? She is.
He is.
There we go. Sue Butka from the Youth Commission is also in the audience. Have you had any questions for her?
Okay. Ms. Ritchie, I'll just say I enjoyed reading the materials you submitted. You've got an interesting background. It seems to fit pretty nicely with what you're interested in volunteering for. Have you, how long have you been in Southborough?
Moved here in 2007, I think.
Okay. And is this your first foray into, to volunteer position?
It is, yes.
All right. Tell any friends of yours who haven't volunteered in the past that, that, that they should think about doing it as well. We're always, it's always terrific when someone who hasn't jumped in before is ready, willing, and able to, to do it. So again, very impressed with your background and your interest. So I'll, I'll maybe start in reverse alphabetical order this time with Mr. Stivers.
This is very confusing. I get used to the regular.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want people getting complacent.
Whose, whose turn is it? Then we'll start in the middle and work out. Good. Again, I'll echo our chairman's comments. We appreciate qualified volunteers to step up to these roles. This, in my view, is a very important group, particularly nowadays, the Youth Commission, Youth and Family Services is doing critical work, and I think it's going to continue to be challenging for quite a while going into the future. So this is, I think, a great place to be for a lot of reasons. Have you attended Youth Commission meetings previously? Do you sort of know what's going on there at this point or not yet?
So not Youth Commission meetings. I approached Sarah Castle about maybe January of last year about learning more about the Youth Commission and the Friends of the South, Friends of the Southborough Youth Commission and Southborough Youth and Family Services. And she told me quite a bit then, I am a member of the 100 Women of Southborough as far as a group that does donations. And I originally approached them because I wanted to nominate them and wanted to learn more about the services in our community, especially around mental health. And so she gave me a, a summary then, and I've participated with, as a volunteer, with the Friends of the Southborough Youth Commission over the past year. So I'm fairly aware of what services are offered and programs are offered and the needs, but I have not participated in the Southborough Youth and Family Services Board meetings.
That sounds, again, like a good start, though. So are there, are there particular initiatives or issues that you're more focused on in terms of things that the Youth Family Services or Youth Commission should be doing more of that you think you can help promote?
I think from what I've heard, they're, they're on the right track for, I know they would really like to have a way to support a referral service that can serve the entire community. I think that's really important to have a, a program that, that you can get someone quick access or get into the system rather than waiting six months to a year to find an appointment. So I, I know that that's an important program that they're looking into being able to fund with either grants or, I was hoping to, to help with the donation from the 100 women, but we haven't had a meeting since, since the, the COVID-19.
Maybe the 100 virtual women now.
Yes.
That, that answers my questions. Thank you. Again, appreciate your volunteering here. I strongly support your candidacy here. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Shea.
Thank you, Marty. And Lauren, thank you for volunteering. You know, like everybody, I enjoyed reading through the citizen activity form that you filled out. Certainly seems that your qualifications line up perfectly with, with the Youth Commission. I don't have any questions. I look forward to supporting you.
Thank you.
Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you for volunteering, Lauren. My questions were already answered, but like everybody else, looking forward to supporting you, joining the commission. Thank you.
Ms. Brascio.
I'm not used to going last. My questions are getting answered here.
Yeah, I know. Those are you with, those are you with, with last names that start early in the alphabet, so.
I know. You get spoiled. Lauren, welcome. Thank you so much for stepping forward. I'm also one of the 100 Women of Southborough, so I certainly appreciate your participation in that. I was very impressed with your background. I look forward to supporting you. But if we could just take a quick second, because there are people watching from home or people that may watch after the fact that may not actually have had the opportunity to read your citizens' activity form, could you just take two seconds and kind of give your background? It's very impressive, and, and I think the public would appreciate hearing a little bit from you about your background.
Sure. So I'm a veterinarian and a veterinary pathologist by specialty. I work at Tufts University in Boston, the Boston campus. And I come from an occupation that has what they describe as an epidemic of, of depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation. So it's very prominent subject of discussion in our field, and it's something that I also have just been very aware of over the years and has always been something I would like to, to help promote in our community, especially in regards to recognition of issues in children and prevention programs in children, supporting the community. There's so many factors that go into mental health, wellness, and mental health concerns from anything, especially in today's age with COVID, childcare, jobs, you know, emergency situations, substance abuse, isolation. There's so many things that go into a person's wellness and, and dealing with issues. Those are just, have been important to me.
Thank you. That, that's wonderful, and I think if there was any questions anywhere, you've certainly answered them. And, and again, thank you for stepping forward, and I look forward to supporting you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Ritchie, before we entertain a motion, Ms. Butka, do you have anything you would like to, to say? You're still out there in virtual world.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
I just wanted to say welcome, Lauren. She's going to be a great asset to the group, and we're looking forward to when we get to have meetings in person again. And, and I've spoken to her at length on the phone, but we're very excited, very, very excited to have her with us.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Is there a motion?
Move to appoint Lauren Ritchie to the Youth Commission term. What's the term?
June 30th, 2023.
June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion?
Marty, both Sarah Castle and Leslie Hadden have raised their hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Let me just give them an, move them over for a second.
Sarah, I apologize. I didn't realize you were out there.
That's okay. Hello, everyone. I was raising my hand because I wasn't sure if Sue was still with us. So I just wanted to also sing Lauren's praises. We, we have appreciated her support of our programs, our services and initiatives and her interest. And, and just reiterate what Sue said, that I think she's going to be a valuable asset to our board.
Great. Thank you. And Leslie, do you want to weigh in as well?
Yes, I am a fellow board member, and I've worked with Lauren for almost a year on the Friends of the Youth Commission, and she's been terrific to work with. She's very committed, and I look forward to working with her on the board as well. I think she's going to be a great addition.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, Ms. Ritchie, with strong recommendations as well. So not hearing any additional discussion, Ms. Brascio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shea.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. It is unanimous. Enjoy and do good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, my watch says 7:59 and 25 seconds. Were we really, were we that good?
You're an expert.
And, and on cue, Mr. Semino's name popped up. Lisa, if, if, I, I, you know, my, my connections all seem stable now, but I should have said this earlier. If for some reason I drop off, obviously, don't wait for me to get back. I'll, I'll churn my way through and, and make it back, but, but just pick up and, and keep going.
Hello, folks.
Hi, Paul. How are you?
Good evening, Paul.
Hello, and hello, and hello. I only see, well, actually, let me expand. Oh, there's everybody. Okay. Nice to see everybody.
And is Mr., is Mr. Hagerty out there as well?
Welcome to the big chair. Just one second. I'm moving him over.
Excuse me just one second, Paul. We're trying to get.
I was just welcoming you all, Marty. I'm going to forget that now.
I'll be nice to you for a little while longer.
Okay.
Hey, Jim, are you there?
He's muted.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay. Our next agenda item is joint meeting with town moderator with a guest appearance by the town clerk for discussion of fall town meeting. And let me see if I can set the table a little bit, hopefully hitting some of the important items. Obviously, we continued a number of items from our annual town meeting, which ultimately was not held at the end of March or beginning of April, but it was held in the, the middle part of June. And at the time, we, in conjunction with the town moderator, as well as various boards and commissions and towns and, and sponsors of articles, focused on the articles that we determined we really couldn't continue having to. we determined we really couldn't continue having to do with budget, financial, et cetera, or that were either non-controversial, or we didn't deem that 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 as wide a swath as possible of the of the the population that might attend town meeting could participate. And so we considered those at the annual town meeting, but continued a number of articles with the, I think, good faith intention that we would have a fall town meeting. And obviously, what weighed heavily into that is, at least in my mind, the idea that things might be a little bit different in the fall than they were in the the spring and summer. That has not come to pass as quickly as we had hoped. And so we're looking at the question of whether or not to have a fall town meeting. And in some respects, whether or not it's even possible for us to have a fall town meeting with various demands. One of I asked Mr. Hagerty, I had a number of conversations with Mr. Hagerty. And number one, and I think everybody saw this, I asked him what the cost of a special town meeting in the fall would be. And it was just a little bit north of $14,000. But more importantly, and just this morning, and Jim, that's why I'm going to put this over to you first. Mr. Hagerty had given all of us, I think, and Mr. Semino dates, a couple of dates in early September and a couple of dates in early October, that he, from a logistical standpoint and a and a resource standpoint, saw as possibilities for a fall town meeting. And based on what I got from you today, Mr. Hagerty, that may have changed. And the possibility, at least from your perspective, of having a town meeting on any date in October is at least incredibly challenging to coming close to to nearly impossible from your perspective and the work you would have to do. So with that, unless someone has anything else, a factor that I've missed, and I know there's other information about the articles and and whether or not individuals would be comfortable with putting them over. But I think the first, the threshold question is whether or not we could even do it. And so I think I I would first like to hear from Mr. Hagerty. If there's no objection to that from the other members of the board. And seeing none, Mr. Hagerty, I'm going to turn it over to you to explain what would be necessary to have a fall town meeting from your perspective and why certain dates might have been possible and now might not be possible. Does all that make sense?
It does. And Mr. Healy, you've accurately summarized the costs and everything else involved. The cost for the annual town meeting we held outdoors was just north of $14,000. It would be comparable to that, and that excludes one-time costs that we incurred that will not come up again. We would also have to factor in where the weather is slightly more unpredictable here in the fall. If we were to schedule a town meeting for Saturday with Sunday as a rain date and both of those days rain, the cost to hold it the following week would go up substantially because we'd have to pay the audio video vendor to take all the gear down and set it back up again. So now you're going from $14,000 to somewhere between $18,000 and $20,000 if it didn't, it wasn't held the first deal. So I don't know if my screen can show this here, but can you see what I'm holding up here?
Jim, you're not on camera.
Oh, even better. Okay. Well.
Hang on, Jim. I just need to make you a co-host to share your screen.
Okay.
Hey, Jim, in your prior career, didn't you do technical stuff for the FBI?
Yes, I did. And I want to talk to you about those hats that are on the on the world behind you.
This is too easy. He needs a real challenge.
Yes. This is my world. Can you see these now?
Not yet.
It's fully encrypted. Good work.
There you go. Anyway, the gist of it is this early voting by mail is killing us. It just is. And to say it's been a disaster is from the state's perspective is an understatement. The one shining light in all this is the spectacular assistance of the local Southborough Post Office. They have just been outstanding to work with. But from lack of mailings, lack of directions, confusion, all the rest of it, from the Secretary of State's office, the rest of it, it's just it's a nightmare for us. And we're mailing out mailings to people that have no interest in voting, no interest in voting in primary elections. It's just killing us. Tremendously underestimated by the state as to what the the cost of this in terms of labor. It's just been a circus. And as of today, 28% of the voters in Southborough have requested vote by mail. The state is projecting that to be at least double that for October. So where we stand right now, we have the state election coming up on the state primary September the 1. We could do it on the 5th or the 12th. I've had longstanding vacation plan, the two weeks vacation I'm taking for only vacation I'm taking in 18 months. I'm not going to be here from the 14th through the 27th. So that's that's a given. Otherwise, you'll be paying for divorce attorney. So that's not happening. Then that brings us getting ready right around the same time the state will be mailing out postcards again for early for voting by mail to every registered voter in Southborough. We anticipate more than a double response to what we have right now. And we're going to get inundated with those things coming in the first week of October. And then we have mandatory two weeks of in-person early voting, including Saturdays and Sundays, to round out the middle half of October. So frankly, we're already working here seven days a week now. And what's keeping us afloat are the high school kids and the college kids we've been able to bring inside and work outside and sometimes in tents in front of the building to keep us afloat. We we just don't have the time to prepare and do this in October. It's as simple as that. We'll be happy to work with you. The first two weeks in September, we could do it, or after the election, if you want to go to the the first part of November. And that that's it in a nutshell.
All right, Jim, hold on a second. And Paul, I'm going to keep you in in reserve for a second. I'm going to see if just on these items that Mr. Hagerty talked about, if and now I will start with you, Ms. Brascio, and see if any members of the board have any follow-up questions.
Thank you. Pertaining to this, have we heard from the Board of Health? Whether, I mean, if you're looking at possibly November after the election, obviously, it couldn't be outside. And with Triple E starting up again as well, has has they have they given any indications if the schools would even allow an inside town meeting if it had to be? I I believe at this point, we're too late to do anything in early September because, Mark, if I'm not mistaken, we need 30 days to post the warrant. Is that correct?
I believe, and Jim can correct me, but I believe for a special, it's only 14 days.
Correct, 14 days.
And I don't know how we would throw everything together because, again, I know some committees have planning board, a lot of the zoning articles have said that they could wait to try to throw something together now and ask them to continue their hearings for the CPA articles as well. You know, to give people ample time to be able to prepare and do the public outreach that they need to do. I just don't think there's time for September. If October's out, I don't know we could do anything outside in November. I worried about October because we've all seen snow on Halloween before. So I I curious to see what the other board members think about how we could potentially pull this off. And again, I think for the zoning, I I will say this. I think for the zoning articles are very important because it sets the tone for the town going forward on how we're going to do things. And to not have the opportunity to have full participation is a concern for me. I mean, schools aren't fully going back. No one knows come October, even if the kids are still going to be in school. The senior centers close through the end of the year. And on important articles such as zoning, I would always advocate for being able to have the most participation because it represents a huge importance to the town. So I'll just kind of.
Brascio, just to answer your question about the Board of Health, the chair did reach out to me. Obviously, you know, they would prefer an outdoor meeting. Again, it's it's a little bit easier. And of course, the success that we had with our annual in June. But if we do look at doing something indoors, they want to have some further discussion about that and and looking at what the guidelines say. And I also had heard from Chief Achilles as the Emergency Management Director. He obviously is in the same line of thinking with the Board of Health. Moving inside gives another level of nervousness. So and again, we're not sure. This is the same issue that we had with the annual meeting. We thought we were all set in March, and then we weren't. So we could set something up and for October and and think we're all set, and then we're not. So it it's that level of uncertainty, but it all depends on where we'd love to hold it.
And I will leave with this final thought. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Hagerty. I know how crazy I can't even imagine how crazy things are in a normal election year, but add COVID on top of it. So I appreciate all that you're doing, all your department's doing, and even considering the opportunity and how we could make this happen to benefit the taxpayer. So thank you.
Thank you. If I could just throw one thing out to you, I did a little homework to talk to other towns that might have held an indoor annual town meeting, and I did not find anyone that held it once when the schools were still in session, which is a significant issue. So when we had initially, as Mr. Purple said, we initially looked at holding one indoors. Just to put this in perspective, if you try to to shoehorn this into Trottoir, and that's really a good way of looking at it, the capacity of the Trottoir Auditorium is 505 seats on a normal conditions. At bare minimum for minimum for COVID, we'd be looking at somewhere in the order of 50 people sitting in the auditorium by the time you do the social distancing. We actually measured that out. If you go to the auditorium and you have, excuse me, to the gymnasium, and you now you're talking somewhere not much north of that, maybe? So now you're looking at maybe maybe 75, but no much, no more than that. Now you're getting into the classrooms. And the problem is now you're trying to to set up to do this and run all the cabling and all the rest of it days in advance to make all this work so that the people in all these rooms have the same experience that somebody does in the main auditorium would very substantially disrupt the school activity. I mean, who knows what the school activity is going to look like moving forward here? I just don't know. But that's a real consideration, and frankly, whether the schools would even allow us to do that. And like I say, I'm not aware of any towns that were able to pull this off while the schools were in session.
Okay, thanks, Jim. All set, Lisa? All right, Ms. Malinowski.
I just have one question related to the cost of it. So if, let's say, we aimed for the first November date that is available, and it was a washout, or it was too cold to do it outside, would we still be out the $14,000 if we just decided to, you know, we're just going to go with this one date, and if it doesn't work out, then we're not going to do it? Would we still be out the $14,000, Jim?
Depends how close to that Saturday we we pulled the trigger, so to speak. We would not it wouldn't be the full 14. It would be a minimal amount. And just as an aside here, no one's asked this question, but I did look into what the cost would be to rent a tent to protect the area where we held the annual town meeting. And it'd be $25,000 for the day just to cover about the the central three sections we had. So.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, Mr. Shea.
For the reasons that Mr. Hagerty stated, I think it's unwise to move forward with a fall town meeting. But also, I went back to the press release that we had issued back in the spring with respect to the articles that we recommended delaying action on. And one of the key points in that press release we had was each of those articles deserved full debate among town meeting members at a time and a place when gatherings would be allowed with fewer restrictions. And I don't think we're at a time and a place now where we have fewer restrictions. I mean, within the last week or 10 days, the governor has actually clamped down on outdoor gatherings. And while that may be, and town meeting action may be exempt from that, the virus doesn't know that that's exempt from that. So I think it's unwise. I think it's putting people at risk. And I don't think we should move forward with a fall town meeting at this point.
All right, Mr. Stivers.
Yes, I echo a lot of the previous comments. I would dearly love to be able to deal with some of these articles that have been pending here. On the other hand, it doesn't look to me like they rise to the importance of the ones that we dealt with in our recent town meeting. And maybe it costs us some money not to do it, or people are frustrated that they can't move things they're supportive of forward quickly. But I think the challenge of the risk, as Mr. Shea pointed out, of not having appropriate opportunity for people who have opinions about these to express the opinions in a way that they're not concerned about their health and safety. And it's challenging for us to put pressure on people to risk their health and safety to come out and participate in such a meeting. I think you might look at other venues that are big enough, but you'd have to go somewhere out of town, which I think technically we could do, but that creates the same kind of pressure in terms of access for people. So you don't want to have people required to travel for 20 miles or whatever to get someplace. It's a big enough venue to hold people, hold enough people to make it relatively safe. So I'm just hard pressed to see any path through these challenges that make it worth taking the risks that we would have to take to push forward on a fall town meeting. So I think you you sit and wait, see what happens, hope it proves in the spring, and just actually hold where we are and keep watching things and push to the spring.
All right, Sam, thanks. Mr. Semino, you you with the Board of Selectmen and the and the Town Administrator either communicated directly or certainly communicated at the annual town meeting itself that we were very appreciative of the fact that sponsors of articles were willing to indefinitely postpone with the notion that that, again, where where we sat in June, we were optimistic that we were going to have a fall town meeting. You've heard, Mr. Hagerty, you've heard what appears to be the temperature of the room right now. Wayne, I'll just put in my two cents. I agree with Mr. with pretty much everything that's been said. The most compelling thing for me is what Mr. Shea said, and that is that for the most part, we continue these articles because they were articles that we thought the entire town, if they chose to go to town meeting, and they they did not go to town meeting because they were legitimately worried of their for their health, that it deserved full discussion among as many members of the town as possible. Clearly, no matter what we do for an October date or a November date, that's not going to be the case. And that is, that's compelling for me. So with that, obviously, it's a Board of Selectmen determination, but you're the town moderator. You were very involved in what went on with the annual town meeting. Is there something we're missing, something you want to weigh in on, a perspective that you want to bring to our attention?
No, no, I don't think there's anything you're missing. And I and I I think you possibly give me too much credit for basically articulating in the spring, for articulating the message of the Board of Selectmen, because I had the, you know, I necessarily have the podium at town meeting. But I think we were all very clear that you know, the selectmen were were behind a plan to take up the non-essential articles at the next town meeting. At the time, the the hope and presumption was that the next town meeting would be in the fall. You know, when COVID hit in March, I thought we'd be clear of it by June. I mean, when we were first postponed for the annual, I was I was surprised then. I'm certainly not surprised in retrospect. And so my, as I've, as I indicated to Mark separately a few days ago, my 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 hope for this meeting of the Board of Selectmen was that the selectmen, you know, would be able to articulate a rationale for why what we all hoped would take place probably can't. And in my opinion, which is no no more valuable in this context than anybody else's, I think you have. So you know, there there is, as a procedural matter, there is the ability of a group of citizens to force a special under our bylaw and state law. to force a special under our bylaw and state law. You know, that, I don't have any reason to believe that there's that much, there's that much power behind that idea right now. But it's something that I assume if and when it occurs, will take up when the time comes. That's pretty much it.
Okay. The one thing I will say along those lines, I watched the same planning board meeting that others did. And, I mean, it was unanimous by the members of the planning board that there are articles, which are important articles, that notwithstanding that importance, and in some respects because of that importance, because they wanted the opportunity for as many people as possible to weigh in, that it made sense not to consider them at a special town meeting, but in the fall, but instead to hold them for our next town meeting, which again, knock on wood, is going to be at the normal time in the spring. My understanding, and Mr. Purple, correct me if I'm wrong, is that one of the primary sponsors of the noise bylaw indicated a preference to go forward with a fall town meeting. And one of the other sponsors you did not hear from, am I characterizing that correctly?
So for the citizen petition articles, you're correct. Mr. Lapine's article regarding the noise bylaw, he had an extreme preference not to wait for the spring. And I did not hear back from Mr. Wei Shen on his preference regarding the plastics bylaw.
I will say this, and hopefully there's agreement from the members of, the other members of the Board of Selectmen, that for Mr. Lapine, who's stated a preference, and for Mr. Wei Shen, who didn't, the same work that you put in to get them for the annual town meeting with the hope expectation that they'd be on for the, for a special town meeting. We're not dissing that effort. We're not taking a position on the merits of your articles. This is simply based on, in somewhat logistical concerns, some health concerns. But there are important bylaws that are being proposed and that as many people in Southborough as possible should have the opportunity to weigh in. With respect to Mr. Lapine, I'll hold out the hope that, I think you indicated in an email to us, that the primary concern, or at least a primary concern of your noise bylaw, is the summer. And hopefully, consideration in the, at a spring town meeting would have the same effect if it passed as consideration at a fall town meeting. So with that as backdrop, I don't think we need to take a vote. You know, I can read a room pretty well, and it doesn't seem like there is a stomach for this Board of Selectmen to take a vote to call a special town meeting and start that process in effect. Ms. Malinowski, your hands up.
Yes, I just have one question related to one of the newly proposed articles that's a potential. And I think it's for Mr. Purple. I've been following the school committee meetings pretty closely. And given the situation that they're in and positions that they took last week, have we received notification that there could be a potential budget shortfall for FY21 that would require an increase in budget?
I've not received anything formal from them yet or no notification. I know you, I've had separate discussions with you that, and I believe a couple of other members of the board who had watched the meeting and had seen some of that information. But we've received nothing formal yet, or even informally, that, you know, that they may be having some budget issues that would need to be, you know, or adjustments made for them.
Okay, so that would be one of my concerns, is that we run into an issue, given the information that they've shown on their slides. Another thing that I think we just need to keep in mind is if we're still aiming for a March-spring town meeting, how feasible is that going to be to have indoors? And, you know, we now have articles that we will want to be taking up at the next town meeting in the spring in addition to anything new that comes up. So I think we just need to be mindful of the amount of articles for that town meeting.
Marty, I would, I would add one logistical point. I don't think it changes where you're headed, but our bylaw requires that annual town meeting be held on a Saturday in March, as you all know. There is no analogous requirement for a special. So for what it's worth, if you were to call a special on any particular day or time, you would be, you know, that would be okay. I don't, I don't think, you know, I don't think that matters in the context that we're discussing this, but I did want to make sure that that point was clarified.
Okay. And the one thing I'll say about the schools, I've seen some of the, the video on that. Hopefully, we don't end up coming to that bridge, because if it does, that's a, that would be a significant financial issue that the town would have to deal with. But if we did, then, I mean, there are provision, emergency provisions in the, in the legislation and emergency orders that would give us some flexibility in dealing with those. I'm just hopeful that doesn't happen either. But, so is there any, again, it would require a motion to consider putting into process calling a special town meeting. And I don't, reading the room, I don't think there's any inclination to head down that road. Am I wrong about that? I am not. All right. Mr. Semino, anything else? If not, we will let you go for the evening.
Yeah, nothing else for me.
All right, so.
Everybody, as always.
All right, Paul, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night.
All right. Mr. Cipriano, how are you?
I'm well, how are you, Mr. Chairman?
I'm well. One quick thing, Aldo, Jim, are you going to hang around or are you leaving us?
No, I'm going to stick around.
Okay, all right. Aldo, thank you very much for being here. And it was appreciated last year and helpful to get updates on where things stood legally, for better or worse. This year as well, there's a decent amount going on legally for the town of Southborough. And so I think what we will do is have you walk through without, and I know you had some communications with us that were attorney-client privileged protected, walk through a summary of where we find ourselves, and then I suspect you're going to have questions from members of the board. I know I'll have some in terms of specific litigation that's pending and maybe some other litigation that is in the offing. Is that all right? Is that fine with the members of the board to just start in with Mr. Cipriano? Aldo, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. We submitted to you, in effect, three legal reports. And the first one is the Town Council Legal Service Outline Report. And initially, that goes into the continued efforts of doing seminars with town boards. And the only one that was missed is really the most important one this year, and hopefully it can be done sooner than later. And the one that was missed was one that was going to be consolidated in a joint session amongst the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, and the Conservation Commission. They requested that. And I think that the real issue is to clarify regulatory interaction and the limits of jurisdiction. So we're looking forward to doing that as soon as it's practicable. And we remind you that because of the importance of those classes, we don't charge. We think that that's, the educational aspect is important, and it saves us a lot of legal issues sometimes, and it saves the town a lot of money. So we're hoping that that will go forward soon with that consolidated effort amongst the three boards and commissions. Zoning and building code enforcement matters.
Aldo, I'm going to jump in, and I think maybe the simplest thing to do, because they are sort of disparate, is after each one of the sort of three reports you divided into, see if there is any questions or comments, rather than having you talk about something that happened 20 minutes ago. Does that make sense?
That's fine with me.
Okay, and I'll take a show of hands. This one's pretty straightforward, but does anybody have any comments or questions about the first item? All right, we don't. On to number two, Mr. Cipriano.
Number two is zoning and building code enforcement. And we have been assisting the Building Department in one particular case as it relates to a pool company and an inability to get compliance over a significant period of time with several open permits and pool permits being open could constitute a public health or public safety issue. So at the direction of the Town Administrator, we participated in getting a demand letter out on behalf of the Building Department and short of having to file judicial proceedings. And that appears to have worked, together with the fact that our advice was that no additional pool permits would be issued to that company until they cleaned up or cleared up the remaining, the existing five, which go back a couple of years. So that's under control. More importantly, I really have to report to the board that the town has a significant amount of use violations in the town, primarily commercial uses in residential areas. We are going to make a short list of what we see to be the most relevant in the town and forward them to the Building Department for their review. This goes to the theory that, under the statute, the statute says that, Chapter 40A, that if the Building Commissioner or zoning enforcement officer gets a complaint, they have to address the complaint, an enforcement complaint or whatever it might be. But that is reactive enforcement. Historically, I have always believed that there is also proactive enforcement, which is if you find something as the zoning police officer, and it's significant that you address it with some form of a letter or a phone call or elevate it to a cease and desist order. And if people do not conform to the cease and desist, then unfortunately, it would go to court for a court order. And this is to just maintain the integrity of the neighborhoods, to keep residential neighborhoods not having landscape businesses or construction yards where they don't belong. So that's going to be something that is, in effect, a new initiative, which we will help the Building Department proceed with. So that's that end of that component.
All right, I suspect there's going to be some questions about this one. Ms. Malinowski?
I do have a question on this one. So in, do you know roughly how often you come across an enforcement issue or a code violation? And does it usually come from Building Department to you or vice versa? And then how does the process work to resolve the issue with that department?
In terms of zoning violation, respectfully, it has not come from the Building Department. What has created a concern for me is what I see traversing the roads, the principal roads of Southborough, in terms of new issues arising or the fact that issues that we took care of years ago, in terms of enforcement, have an effect resurfaced. So it's right now, me trying to guide the Building Commissioner or zoning enforcement officer in a general way, that there are issues out there that need to be addressed. And I'm talking about the real acute issues, because once you address an acute zoning use violation issue, the word goes out and people start to conform. That's always been my experience as a prosecutor of those type of matters, and it works very well. And again, it's just to keep and preserve the residential neighborhoods from the intrusion of significant commercial uses which are not permitted.
Marty?
Is that it, Chelsea? Yeah, okay. Mr. Cyrus?
Again, I think this is an interesting issue, because I've actually had people comment to me about businesses operating in residential neighborhoods, often construction kind of activity. And I pass from time to time those kind of things along to the building inspector, and I sort of lose track of what happens to it. And I think it is an important issue to make sure that zoning is relatively complied with, at least to preserve the character of the neighborhoods. So I, again, think this is a good thing to pursue, and hopefully, a little bit of enforcement can motivate people to be more careful about this. So I encourage this.
All right. Aldo, when you said it'd be an initiative, how would the initiative work? Is it just alerting the Building Department to be more aware of these items? Or is something more proactive going to be, going to be done? Are there going to be, you know, surveys done of various areas? Again, how do you foresee the initiative working?
Honestly, the initiative should work from the patrol of the Building Commissioner in the streets of the town on a routine basis as she is dealing with building code issues. However, I have seen certain issues, and the Town Administrator said, please inform her of those specific issues to assist her, which I will do. But historically and traditionally, it is the zoning enforcement officer as part of the duties who should make the patrol, verify what's going on in the neighborhoods, find issues, and then deal with them. And there's a variety of ways. And speaking with the Building Commissioner, she said, well, sometimes I like to make a phone call or send a letter, which is, okay, if that's the first graduated response or issue, that's fine. It gets up to the point of a stop order or a cease and desist. And once a cease and desist order issues from a Building Commissioner on a zoning matter, if it is not complied with by a date certain, which has to be in that cease and desist order, then the matter should go to court to get a court order on the administrative order. And my experience has been the judges understand these zoning enforcement matters, and in 99% of the cases, if you can prove that it's a violation of the bylaw, they will grant the court order, they'll grant an injunction, they'll assess fines. So that process is all in place, but it really is going to start with the zoning enforcement officer with my help or by whatever means people determine, verifying the issues throughout the town.
Okay, and that, I guess the final question or area question for me then is, what you're identifying is obviously important, and, you know, we have zoning rules and regs for a reason, and the assumption is that, that people are going to play by the rules, and if they don't, there are going to be consequences. Consequences have costs on both sides. And is there a sense, if, in other words, if we up enforcement, what the, first, let's take our side of it, what are the costs going to be to the town in terms of, obviously, the building inspector works for the town? So the cost there might be that, and that's a discussion maybe that we have to have with the building inspector about what, what resources would have to be moved from one place to another to undertake that sort of enforcement. But on the legal side of things, if we bring an action, is that entirely cost to the town? Do you get legal fees back? What are the range of fines that can be imposed so that they're somewhat covering our costs? Because, again, zoning enforcement is important, but by the same token, the town has a budget to live with.
Right, and you can't get legal fees back in this particular type of a case. You can get the fines assessed. You know, the likelihood in many of these cases, you try to avoid litigation, you would try to avoid going to the court, and the components of doing that are well-known. And that is the, a very clear, precise cease and desist order from the Building Commissioner with a date certain. And if that doesn't work, the letter or the cease and desist would go to Town Council, who would then send basically a letter of intent to litigate, have that served upon the individual. And in most cases, when it elevates to that point of, if you don't comply, you're going to court, and if you're a corporation, you're going to need a lawyer. Most people in that case will go back, turn back to the building. Most people in that case will go back, turn back to the building commissioner and say, all right, I want to comply. Tell me what I need to do. The, the likelihood of, of a court appearance is in the most extreme cases where people just don't understand what the, what the law is.
Okay. So the next step on that is, is there, have, have you, have you had specific communications with the building inspector about undertaking this initiative? And are those, if so, are those, is that in the works?
It is. It is because most recently, I met both with the building commissioner and with Mark Purple. And we coordinated at least the first step of identifying some of the more acute issues that I see and sending them to the building commissioner, maybe like five, a test group of five, and have her go out and inspect and make a determination on her own whether or not they violate the bylaws.
Okay. So let's, 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 let's reconvene virtually or otherwise when, when those first steps are taken. Because the other thing is if, 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 you know, deterrence can work. And if, if, if folks who otherwise might be not in compliance with the zoning regs realize that the town is going to take enforcement action, then they may clean up their own act without the, the town having to need to do, without the town having to do anything. So that's the ideal.
That's exactly correct.
Okay. Anything else on this score? All right. Next up.
Then I gave you a, a series of the legal opinions that we had issued during the course of the year. And I should give just a quick background, particularly for the newest selectmen. What we do and have done for 30 years is instead of having somebody call us and say, I have a legal question, and off the cuff, and sometimes not enough information is given, documents are not furnished, mistakes are made, or when you communicate something verbally, as it goes down the line in government, sometimes it's miscommunicated unintentionally. So years ago, I came up with an opinion request form. And that basically says, identify the facts, tell us what your legal issue is, and ensure that you submit with those any documents you wish for us to review. So that compels the, the town official or a city official, depending on what it is, to do a little homework to evaluate what the legal issue is. Sometimes they'll say, oh, it's not really a legal issue. It's an administrative issue. Or even the town administrator might say, this is really not a legal issue. This can be handled otherwise. But when it does become a legal issue, then we have a detailed analysis request to which we will respond with a detailed legal opinion. And the purpose of that is then the town official can use that opinion as a defense in anything they do. And if some legal challenge comes, we will back that official or that board with the written legal opinion, which ultimately ends up in some cases in court. And the judges want to see by, by what procedure did you follow? We followed the advice of town council. So we take those opinions very seriously to ensure that they're as accurate as we can make them for the comfort of the, the town official or the town board, but also to make sure that it'll withstand judicial scrutiny. So that's what we did. And we've been doing that for 15 years now. And the most recent group are, are in that report. The most recent of all had been a request of the historical commission relative to the bond on 84 Main Street. And what procedure they had to follow to either reduce or to release the bond. So we guided them through that and they proceeded in that regard on the bond, just by way of example.
Can I just ask a question about that process?
Sure.
So does the initial request form go to your office or does it come through town administration to be triaged?
Very good point. And historically, it goes to Mark first. He evaluates it basically to screen it, to see what we've got as a legal issue or is it a legal issue? And once Mark approves it, then it's on for a legal opinion.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything on that batch of legal opinions? No, I think we're all set. Next item, Aldo.
Yep. The second report is the litigation status report. And it consists of six principal cases. Three are the remaining cases relative to Park Central. And the principal one case of those three is the appeal of the comprehensive permit, which is the Huang case versus the zoning board of appeals, which was docketed in 2016 and which we just received notification by a virtual meeting with the court that a final pre-trial will be occurring on January 5th, 2021. And for the first time, a virtual de novo hearing scheduled for January 13th, 2021. This could be a little unwieldy because there are, it's, it's going to be a two or three day hearing. To do that virtually in a court is going to be, it's going to be a challenge. But that's the principal case. The other two cases are Park Central versus the ZBA. And that's pending in land court. And the issue there is the ZBA's decision upholding the planning board's determination denying site plan approval for a very simple reason, incomplete plan filings. And the resolution of that case is going to depend in significant part on the resolution of the conservation commission notice of intent and plan that was filed after an appeal was taken to DEP and to which in effect the Conservation Commission was upheld and a new plan was required that showed more drainage facilities and less units. That is being monitored by land court, but they're awaiting to see what happens with the, the notice of intent and the plan filing with conservation. And the last one is, again, a, a case filed by Capital Group, Park Central against the Conservation Commission. And it had to do with the commission's attempt to enforce local bylaw under the 40B comprehensive permit. And our advice was that you could, to an extent, do that. And in fact, the decision of the ZBA and the comprehensive permit left that issue open. And as a result, the Conservation Commission sought additional information and was told at the time, and I was at that meeting, by the engineer for the developer, they declined to give the Conservation Commission any additional information. Anytime you say that to a regulatory board, the likelihood is very good that you're going to get a denial. And that's what happened in that particular case. So those three are basically grouped, but the principal case will be heard in January, we hope. It has been continued off several times, but we believe that it'll be ready for this de novo hearing in Worcester Superior Court in January. The, the other case that's pending is watershed investment versus the planning board. This is where the planning board, under the multi tiers of review necessary to grant special permits in the Main Street Village District, concluded that the applicant had not met all of the criteria and that in effect, the building was too big and too high. And an appeal was taken by the developer and we're defending it in land court on the basis that the, the, excuse me, that the planning board acted correctly. And we attempted a mediation with a, a land court judge, which was fruitful, but there was not enough give and take by the applicant relative to building changes. So that, that ended. We have completed discovery, except I am going to depose the applicant to get additional information. And that would probably get a hearing sometime ultimately in mid 2021. Lastly, we had only one appellate tax board case. And it was Walgreens versus the Board of Assessors. And that, after a little litigation battle, was dismissed by Gunther Southborough Walgreens Company. And I guess it's a point that I should tell the board with my experience again, that there is a very low group of appellate tax board cases in Southborough, particularly as they relate to commercial. You have none on residential, which is very unusual. But it, it just means that the values must be close to correct. Relative to commercial, when commercial doesn't take appeals based upon the tax rate, it has to have something to do with the tax rate. And in this particular case, respectfully, Southborough has a factor of one. The tax rate is the same for residential as it is for commercial. And those cases that I've had elsewhere increase when you have classified or classification tax rates where you shift the burden to commercial. Because then they, in effect, are going to challenge that because they're paying more even though they have income. So it's okay i- in terms of an administrative decision, in terms of the fact that regionally, commercial operations see an advantage in Southborough because taxes are the same as they are for residential. Anyway, that's the, that's the, the total of that report.
I, I am going to have some questions, but, but I'm going to bore people with some of those questions because they're going to be. I dove into the dockets the last week or so, and I've got some questions about what's going on in some of the litigation. So I will, I will, with, with that warning of some boredom coming up, see if anybody else has any questions first.
You must be really bored.
No, I don't find it boring. That's the, that's the.
Uh-oh.
That's why I went to law school, I guess.
I just have one.
Let me start with Chelsea.
Okay. Aldo, can you just, for the parks, current Park Central cases, can you just identify who's representing each of the town groups or boards and committees?
All cases relative to the zoning board of appeals and the Conservation Commission, my office is representing.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, it looked like you had something?
I did. Just, just a quick question, something that we had talked about, I believe, last year. When, when Attorney Cipriano came in, as we talked about trying to find a way to do some form of repository for filings. So the board would have access to, short of going out, and Marty, again, you're probably better at this than me, searching the dockets and, and finding some of the filings. I just want to know if we're, if this board is, this current board makeup is still interested in pursuing this, and then how could we possibly make it happen?
The answer, the answer to that is yes. Because you'll hear my complaints about the, the, how difficult it is to track documents down in the state court system. I'm used to the federal side of things, which life is a lot different there.
I have absolutely no problem in furnishing the board with every pleading that is pending or will be pending before those courts so that you can actually follow. Dockets are tough. I understand that. On occasion, we will inform the Conservation Commission, the zoning board of appeals or the planning board. But we have never taken a very comprehensive approach of letting them see every pleading by all parties. But we'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Let me, Aldo, let me just follow up on that. Again, I don't practice in state court. Are the, do you all file electronically or is it still mostly paper filing?
Mostly paper.
God. Do, um, obviously you create an electronic copy of, on just the word processing and otherwise.
Absolutely.
So, so getting, getting copies of any of that, anything that you create is easy. There's an electronic copy that just could be emailed.
Anything that any of the lawyers in the case create, you know, as part of the docket, we can, we can furnish to you.
So the, when you, when service of process is made on you by the, whether the plaintiff or defendant, whoever, whoever's on the other side, or if there's a, a co-defendant, those are, those are served on you electronically or hard copy?
Well, they're not served on me. I, I compel them to serve them on the boards, especially under the zoning act. We can't accept service. Zoning Act is specific of how you must serve. Lawyers will say, well, you accept service. And I said, no, you have to follow a process. I'm not going to make this easy for you. Plus, the statute is clear. You need to serve by delivery or certified mail to each member of the board. And then my policy is I immediately have those documents sent to me to verify procedural compliance with the statute, just by way of example.
And then are those converted to, to, into an electronic format?
We, yeah, most of the time we do. We do.
Okay. I don't want to be the repository, although I could be. But maybe, Mark, this is a, I'll, I'll track you down later this week and figure out a process. Because, again, particularly for the Huang litigation, I looked and, and, and I mean, there's some interesting limiting motions that are being filed in the case. And, and I'll be, I'm going to follow up in a second with some of the questions about what it looks like to hear, what, what it appears the hearing is going to look like in terms of, of. I mean, I saw that, that, that the, the, the members of the zoning board of appeals made it an limiting motion not to be called as witnesses. Is that, I, I didn't see a ruling on that. Is that like, for instance, is that likely to carry the day? But it, but I'm guessing that between now and December or so, there's going to be a decent amount of, of pre-trial filings in those case that are going to determine what that hearing looks like. And I know, and I suspect others as well would like to see, you know, it's a pretty important hearing. What it's, what, what the contours of that are going to look like.
I, I understand completely, and there will be more procedural motions filed based upon, particularly the witnesses that the plaintiffs wish to call that are town officials, current or prior. And the reason why we file that motion is because in administrative law, and I don't mind saying this because every lawyer that does zoning understands this. Under administrative law and the zoning act, when you take an appeal, you're taking an appeal of the four corners of the decision of the regulatory board. Whatever they decided is in the four corners of the decision. Ancillary or collateral matters, their mindset, anything else is not relevant, usually, except what's in the four corners of the decision. Because when a, a judge conducts this so-called de novo hearing, the hearing anew, he or she is weighing the evidence they hear against the four corners of the decision. Now, the only time that that doesn't happen is if there's a collateral matter, something unique in terms of decisions being made outside a, a, a hearing room, which is rare if at all. But this particular case is probably going to see a challenge of that nature.
Okay. So does that, so what, what is the? If there is a de novo hearing simply, simply on the matters that were presented to the board? Is that the, is that, in other words, is that the, the, the position that's being taken by the defendants, I guess, in the case? That that's, that is, that the hearing should be limited to that, exactly what was presented to the zoning board of appeals? And whether or not, given what was presented to the zoning board of appeals, I mean, if it's de novo, the same decision is appropriate. Is that, is that the defendant's position in the case?
No, their, 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 their position is that it should be much beyond that.
No, no, the defendants.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, no, the, the co-defendant's position is definitely that, as it normally should be, is that the decision of that board, the four corners of that decision is what's on appeal. And it's limited to that. That's correct.
Okay. Now, what, what if, other than, I mean, obviously the town is sued, so we're a party to the lawsuit. We have to be there. What, what is, I mean, but we weren't a party to the matter before the zoning board of appeals. So what, if any, role do we have at that hearing?
The role that I have is to defend the actions of the town board.
But if it's de novo, what is, in other words, if it's de novo, it's a completely, you know, starting from scratch review. So if that's the case, what are we defending?
We're defending the decision of the board. The de novo hearing process under zoning is a bit unique. And I learned that a long time ago. And it is that a judge And it is that a judge usually would simply say, okay, give me the, the decision. There it is. Okay, now you may proceed plaintiff to resubmit or submit your position on this decision. And then the co-defendant, particularly if the defendant is the successful permit holder, has to defend their permit. My role in a de novo hearing is really third place. Basically, just letting those two adjudicate the principal issue of the status of the permit. And then if challenged in terms of the actions of the board, proving that they acted properly under administrative process and were not arbitrary, capricious, or whimsical.
Okay, so that's the, the factual, the factual dispute will be between the plaintiff and the defendants. To the extent there are challenges to procedural irregularities, then that's where the town comes in?
Correct. That, and if they, if they attempt to call town witnesses, then we have to determine the basis of that and whether that's appropriate and whether we're going to try to object.
Okay. And in terms of the, I mean, obviously, these, what is the, is the Superior Court aware of what's going on in Land Court? And if they are, do they care? And vice versa? In other words, what's the likely chronology of these things?
You know, it's, that's a very good point. Superior Court is not really totally aware of the, the current proceedings, although there were other attempted actions which became case law relative to this entire matter. And Superior Court judges were aware of that. One went to the mass appeals court by the plaintiffs and their action in the appeals court was not upheld. But in any event, it is Land Court that is more scrutinizing on what's happening in the Superior Court action, the principal case, and what's happening with the plan before the conservation commission. Because in my experience, Land Court is about as close as you're going to get to a federal court in the state court system. They're, they're very precise in their, in their, anytime they tell you there's a date, it's cast in absolute stone that you be prepared on a date certain to either make argument or to file a brief. So Land Court is monitoring closely the other cases. And their review is, well, are we going to continue to just wait? Or do we expect you parties to move forward on the existing litigation? So far, they have been cooperative in waiting with the anticipation that these cases are starting to wind down. But in any time, these Land Court judges could say, okay, we, we, we've seen enough. We understand the administrative process work slowly. But let's go to dispositive motions. You want to file dispositive motions? Any more discovery? Or should we have our own trial? So that's what I anticipate soon in the future.
Okay. And then finally, just on the, on the Bemis litigation, what is that? I mean, that's an appeal of a planning board decision, but there's discovery going on. So it is a, so it's not really an appeal. What is it?
No, it, it is an appeal, but we did cross-discovery, which was permitted by Land Court. And our discovery is complete. Our, our interrogatories and, and production of documents is complete. However, I've reserved the ability, they can't, I should say this, that a party cannot depose a zoning board of appeals member or a planning board member. That is firm case law because, again, doesn't matter what they were thinking. It's in the four corners of their decision is what is being appealed.
Yeah, that's why I don't understand, and I, I apologize. This is my last, but that's why I don't understand the discovery. If, 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 if the, if the review is, did the planning board, is it abuse of discretion standard? Is that the one that's used or?
In the planning, well, for a special, for the denial of a special permit, it would be that, yeah, that they either abused their discretion, that they acted arbitrarily, whimsically, or exceeded their authority in those, and none of those cases, or none of those situations exist with the planning board. The planning board acted correctly in evaluating three full tiers of conditions and regulations as it related to the village district and the downtown.
Okay, so I, I, I'm gonna, I, I still don't understand why that, why, why discovery's going on. But, but that, I'll leave that to my unfamiliarity with, with.
Am I talking to you about that offline?
Yeah, with Land Court. It just seems, it seems crazy.
I will tell you one other thing, and I don't want to get too deeply into the, the, the legal aspects of the, the procedure. But you, I'm sure you can appreciate this. What I also learned years ago is that the, the, the presentation in a de novo hearing can bring in new evidence, even though the judge is weighing it against the four corners of the decision before him or her. And my early question a, as a, as a rookie lawyer was, well, you're on, how can you weigh evidence that was not heard by the administrative board? And I remember getting a very, I don't know, a, a very interesting answer that didn't answer it. But it's like, well, that's the way the statute is. So in any event, that's.
All right, well, on these, on these matters, Aldo, I'm going to touch base with Mark and figure out a, a process for getting the, the, I don't think we have to go back, obviously, but particularly, maybe I'll go through and identify some of the important documents, and particularly the Park Central litigation going back. But, but going forward, just a, just a mechanism for getting the electronic copies. And, again, once, once they're electronic, then folks can look at whatever they want. But I'll, and I'll talk you about some of the other stuff online. I still don't quite understand what the hell is going on with the, with the planning board thing. But, but I'm not going to bother everybody else with, with, with my confusion. So, all right, thanks.
So the last report is the tax foreclosure and collections report. Historically, we had started tax collection just about the time that Brian Valentine came on board, and I came on board. When Brian told me that he had information for me, and that was a significant amount of uncollected taxes, could I help him? And we do that and have done that for many years. So that first round was successful, and it also resulted in certain properties basically coming to the town as tax possessions, which I think I put at the end of this report, which was, again, several years ago. But the new round is more collecting money than getting foreclosures. And really, that's the purpose. Municipalities per se don't want the land. They just want people to pay their taxes on time. So what you see here in this report relates to all of those efforts in the last year and the collections that were made, not only for unpaid real estate taxes, but in one particular case, a declination to pay excise taxes on equipment, commercial operation, and further failure to pay corporate personal property taxes. And it's no secret what we did is we went to West Road District Court. We got a keeper attachment. We had South Row's constable become the keeper. Went in with a, a police officer and another constable. And the owner was told that he could pay under the court order of keeper attachment, or he could have his equipment taken off the site at 6:30 in the morning. And the individual paid, whatever I have in the report, I think about $30,000. And that ended the litigation. Our purpose is to simply get the funds to, to the town on the delinquency. One, because it enhances the bond rating of the town to have a low group of tax cases outstanding, delinquencies. And two, it sends a message to the other residents of the town that your town is making sure that everybody pays their taxes on time. So that's the summary of that report.
Question, Marty? If I may?
Yeah, Mr. Styris.
Aldo, is it your view that we are basically pretty much caught up with this? Or is there a, a queue of 50 of these actions that we just haven't gotten to yet? Or are we now basically in pretty good shape? Everybody should be followed up at this point is in process somewhere.
I, we, I don't believe the town has 50 or anywhere near 50 outstanding. After that first round 15 years ago, Brian has honestly kept tax cases down by his own efforts or by demands that we've made. I can't tell you honestly that what's in the four corners of this report are the only cases. But if there are several others, the, they, I don't anticipate that there are more than maybe a half a dozen.
Okay, so not a large number hanging out?
No.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else? I've got one quick thing. No, just, Aldo, and, and maybe this is for Mark, and, and I know Brian's gone, but it just strikes me that the, the way we view tax delinquency in 2017, 2018, 2019 may differ from the way we view it in 2020. And again, I don't have a feel for what the unemployment rate is like in South Row as a result of COVID-19. I, I don't have a, I don't have a feel yet for whether or not that's had a, an impact or a significant impact on the property tax revenues and the ability of, of some people, because of conditions outside of their control, to be able to make their tax payments. But I guess if, I guess I would say, and this is for Mark and Brian as well, if we, if we see a spike, and if it, particularly if the spike relates to individuals and even entities that for the previous fill-in-the-blank years have been fine-upstanding, taxpaying citizens, but then all of a sudden, something different happened in 2020. I just want our intensity to be up about that.
To be honest with you, I, I anticipate that issue. The ones that we've taken action on have really been intentional delinquencies, all pre-COVID. But yeah, it's expected that we may see, obviously, bankruptcies, business failures, inability of families to pay. And there's a whole group of ways that you can address those in lieu of a heavy-handed approach of collection, right down to, in certain cases, the qualify, a payout schedule or a delay.
Okay. Marty, if I may?
Yeah, Lisa, go ahead.
So, Aldo, can you just take a, a couple moments and just kind of, kind of go over the process and, and kind of the timeframe on, on how long one of these, in a typical case, may or may not take? And again, you know, it could be six months, you know, it could be a matter of letters and filings and, and whatnot. But just, just briefly, if you could just kind of update us on the process.
I'd be glad to. There are two main procedures that we utilize. The initial one or the, the primary one is the tax foreclosure. A tax foreclosure commences with a notification or a demand to the, to the taxpayer that they are delinquent. If they pay a few days thereafter, it's over. If they don't pay within a certain period of time, let's say 30 days, then it goes to a tax taking, which is an instrument of taking that is duly recorded against the property as a lien by the treasurer-collector. Now, that is not, some people say, oh, it's a tax taking, so the town owns my property. You don't at that point. It is simply a lien against the property. If it is subsequently paid, the lien is released and the case is over. If it is not paid, then horrific interest continues to accrue. And then the decision is, what's our next step? And ultimately, it is a petition for tax foreclosure in Land Court. And Land Court's jurisdiction is such that they, is a professional staff in the recorder's office, and they will proceed in, in, in an expedited way, but an expedited way on a standard tax foreclosure is probably, well, was up until the pandemic procedures, six to nine months. If it is a complicated case, and I call it the estate cases, where a husband and wife, a mother or father have passed away. The last deed was 50 years ago. The children are living in the house. They're not paying taxes. They're not, they're doing nothing except utilities. And we have to figure out who has an interest in the property. Then we have to file what we call letters of diligent search, which Land Court judges look at to make sure that we have notified everybody that has an interest so that they have an opportunity to either defend, protecting the property, or paying it out. And the Land Court judges scrutinize these letters. And you better get an A or B, or you're, you're going nowhere. So in any event, that is that process. And then we get a judgment of tax foreclosure. Once a town or city gets a judgment of tax foreclosure, then it, the property becomes a tax possession, usually under the custody and control of the tax collector or the treasurer. But it also, the Board of Selectment now start playing a role because it can be maintained as a tax asset, or it can be sold at public auction and then put it back on the, the tax rolls and get the tax money back, or at least hopefully most of it. Or it can be converted to municipal use. Now, there is a right of redemption, but the, the redemption, people's right of redemption in that foreclosure process, 98% of the time, they let it go. I mean, if they're going to do something about it, they're going to do something about the unpaid taxes early on, not late on. And then there's just one final other note. We also use a, a more expedited approach, which is tax collection by civil suit. We just file those in West Road District Court or Worcester Superior. It's more expedited, but it doesn't foreclose the property. It basically acts as an action against the taxpayer. We get what we call the judgment and execution, which is something you would get in any case where people owe money. And if they don't pay on the basis of that, then we go to a sheriff's sale. And in that particular case, the sheriff's department in Worcester County would offer it for sale. And if nobody bid, then the sheriff's department would issue a deed, a sheriff's deed, to the tax collector. And then it also becomes a tax possession to the town. I've only had one of those. Most people pay the smaller cases on the civil action. And most people pay on the Land Court actions for tax foreclosures. But some are just curing bad title or curing an issue on a, an inexact parcel, although some parcels are buildable. We've seen that. Or some parcels are abandoned with structures on them, and those have value in a, in a public auction. That's the overview of the process. And any, we always advise that any costs, legal fees of the town should be added to the tax account so that it's principal, interest, fees, which include legal fees. And Brian, I think, is beginning to do that. But that's important because the town shouldn't have any, try to not have anything out of pocket if they can help it. In terms of costs or fees, get the property back on the tax rolls.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, that's a little long, but that's, that's the process.
No, that's perfect. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, are we all set on the legal side of things?
From my, my end, we are.
And I think we are in this end as well. Mr. Sipriano, thank you very much, and we, I will be in touch.
Very good. I'll be around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right, next up, reports. I have three items in mind. Number one is, and, and hopefully, we come up for air sometime in early October or so. But I had this conversation with Ms. Braccio and Mr. Purple, looking at, at agendas. For whatever reason, better or worse, we're chock full for the, for the, you know, immediate future. So, I mean, tonight's a bit of an indication. It was a little bit heavy because of the, we had to deal with the, with the fall town meeting. But, but looking ahead to September 8th and, and going forward, just, we're going to have some heavy agendas. So make sure that, that you've got a good, comfortable spot in your home for, for our meetings. And, and in terms of agendas, a, a, a couple of people, sometimes it's, it's conversation. Sometimes I've gotten emails. Sometimes they go to me and Mark or just Mark. My view of if, if somebody wants something on an agenda, if it seems reasonable, it's going to end up on an agenda. It might not be on the next one, but, so, unless it's something that you don't think I'll understand in terms of, of the, the title or something like that, I don't need a lengthy explanation. If you're looking to put something on the agenda, unless it doesn't make sense, it's going to be on the next agenda or one soon afterwards. Fair enough?
Good, thank you.
Okay. The second is on the goal setting. Vanessa, I think she sent it out to everybody, put together a, a detailed list. What I'm going to do, and I think I'll have it by September 8th, is put together, did, did everybody not see this?
Didn't see that, yeah.
No, not yet. We're still formatting that, Marty. By category, but actually, Mark and I talked about that this. By category. But actually, Mark and I talked about that this afternoon, and that will go out to the full board tomorrow.
Okay, I guess maybe I'm thinking of the minutes. Where the listings, okay. When I get, when I get that, and when all of us get that, what I wanna do is put it in some sort of abridged form. And with the idea that, that I don't see any reason for it not to be part of our regular agendas, so we can, we can have a, a, a sort of running tally on what we said we were gonna do of maybe what we've done ideally, and what we still have to do in terms of our goal setting. So once I get that final document, I'll play around with, with, again, coming up with an abridged version and, and hopefully maybe even by September 8th, it'll become part of the packet we get with our agenda.
Good idea. Thanks.
And finally is, there is, on August 29th, there is a, I don't know the details of the event. But, but there is an event in the offing, a, a virtual ice bucket challenge that is in a continuation of and in honor of, of former selectman, the late Brian Shiffrin. As part of that, and, and again, I, people, you know, look, look for details in, in the sort of social media sphere that I, I don't exist in very well. But apparently there, there, it looks like there's gonna be an event on August 29th. There was some discussion about the possibility of the town being able to finalize a field naming in time for that event. And I will tell you, I wrestled with the possibility of it. I looked back at previous minutes and discussion and I think I'm speaking for the entire board that there's, there's, there's complete unanimous support for doing the right thing to recognize Mr. Shiffrin and to take a naming position for a field, an athletic field in town in his honor. Because it's such an important thing, though, I, I, I don't think that it should be rushed to try to be done by August 29th. I, this is my position, and if, if, if the rest of the board disagrees, then, then we can take a different direction. But to let the Shiffrin family know that we're very much, we continue to be in support that COVID-19 has, has literally thrown us a curveball in terms of, of marching ahead in these directions. That we won't be able to accomplish that by August 29th. But that, having just mentioned agendas, we will get it on an agenda as soon as possible and to do right by Mr. Shiffrin and the Shiffrin family. So that's kind of where I come out, but I'm happy to hear from other members of the board and see if they feel differently.
I agree. Again, do it right, don't rush.
If I may, Marty?
Yeah, Lisa.
So, you know, this, this goes back, this, this was something that youth baseball had approached Dan about, I believe initially. And there, there is support, and there will be a letter forthcoming from youth baseball. Brian was a very active member. He was a coach for many years. He coached a lot of these kids. I know that, that we had discussed it and we were positive about, you know, the makeup of the board was at the time, wanting to move forward with something. And I, and I understand that COVID got in the way. But this is still front and center for youth, youth baseball, for the Shiffrin family. And because this has been going on, I, I wanna say for almost a year now, I believe. I, I believe we've been having these discussions, maybe nine months. So while I absolutely understand wanting to do this and wanting to do this right, I worry because so much time has gone on, and there is such an opportunity for a nice event to honor Brian through the Ice Bucket Challenge. I personally would rather see something sooner rather than later, but obviously, I'm one person on a board of five. So, thank you.
And Lisa, I, 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 I hear you. This is what I worry about. And that is that it's a big deal. And I mean that in the very best way. I mean, to, to, and, and to, to name the, the right field, to make sure that, that that, that there's way in from as many directions as possible. Basically that we get it right. And we, you know, nobody did anything wrong, but we didn't get notice of it until a very, I, I'm not sure that we could have pulled it together for, for a, an August 29th date anyway. But I, I just, I, I worry that, number one, that we set a precedent for, for acting. And I agree, we, I mean, it's been on, on our radar for a while, but, I mean, geez, so much got lost in the shuffle with, with the, the, the crazy race we've been running, trying to, you know, keep up with COVID-19. That I hear you. I don't disagree with anything you said, other than I feel uncomfortable with pushing it ahead to August 29th, to try to meet the August 29th deadline. That's all.
And I appreciate that, Marty, and I will go with what the majority of the board, I mean, obviously, I don't wanna create an issue on this. I mean, I, I, again, I, I had the opportunity to serve with Brian on a couple of different boards and committees. So obviously, it's, it's very near and dear to my heart. Not that it's not to all of us, but I will bend to the will of the board. I'll be interested to hear what the other two members of the board have to say.
Okay.
Yeah, well, so I'll, I'll chime in here as well because, you know, because a lot of this started while I was still chair, you know, in the last, over the last year. And I know that I attended a meeting with the Recreation Commission. I'm gonna guess it's February sometime. I, I haven't gone back to look at the exact date, but I'm gonna guess it was February of this year. And there was talk at the time about naming a field in front of the Woodward School, the, the men's softball field, or the softball field in honor of Brian. And from that discussion that I had with recreation, there was consensus that a field at Finn would be more appropriate. And as we had that meeting, I had every intention of continuing with that and had envisioned something coinciding with like the opening of the Little League season, opening day for Little League, or some, sometime in the spring where the entire community could partake in an event for that. And then COVID hit and everything just went awry. And, you know, unfortunately, we're, we're still in a situation now where, you know, we do have restrictions on, on gatherings and limitations on that. And whatever we do, I, I do want it to be right for Brian as well. And I wish we could have done it back in the spring. You know, I wish it could be behind us now and done right, and so many in town could have participated in that, in that event. But, you know, unfortunately, that's, that was beyond any of our control. Whatever we do, I just wanna make sure it's done right.
Chelsea, any weigh-in?
So I wasn't on the board when this was discussed. So can someone just explain? Has this, have we already decided that the field will be named after Mr. Shiffrin? Or do we go, are we already done with the naming process? And, or are we still deciding? I mean, it sounds like there's consensus to do that, but where are we at in the process, I guess?
I, I don't think we ever took a formal vote. I mean, it was one of these things where, where there was clear, I mean, there was, is, I think always will be, clear unanimity that it's the right thing to do. It's an appropriate thing to do. I don't think we had taken, we hadn't put pen to paper about what the name of the field would be, when the naming would be. I, I, I don't think there was, I agree with you, Brian, that, that it was gonna be Woodward. And then, well, did it make more sense for Finn? But I don't think a vote was taken that, yes. I could be wrong about that, but I don't think those formalities, that's what, that's what concerns me in terms of, of just rushing ahead too, too fast to, to, it's not an artificial deadline, but to meet a deadline that we didn't have in mind.
Yeah. And that, that was really, I, I don't think there has been an official vote either by us. I don't think Recreation has taken official vote per se. And the commitment after the meeting that I attended with them was that you know, Recreation and, and our board would continue to work together to, to implement something and make sure it happened. And it was just shortly after that, that the trains just went off the track with respect to groups' abilities to meet and all that, so.
And, and Chelsea, just to give a little bit of context, so just after I had gotten on the board, maybe my first year, Brian, and I'm sure you remember this, when the youth baseball requested to name a field after Eric Green. And the process that was followed for that was they, they had worked with Recreation, they came forward with a request. You know, and the board considered the request, and we had a discussion with both youth baseball and Recreation. And, you know, we took a position that that was the right thing to do. So we did. And, and, well, yes, Brian and Marty, I absolutely agree, there was no formal vote taken. I, I agree the consensus. So it seems like there's question and, and, and everyone wants to do this and do this the right way. So what the board decides today, I will 100% support. So if waiting is the ideal option to, to do what the board feels is the best way to honor Brian, then I will absolutely respect that. Because that's all we all want at the end of the day.
Right.
I am going to, I am going to suggest that we not take a formal vote, but that I am going to read the room that, that while we want to do it, and we would love to do it by August 29th, that we are gonna delay and, and get it right for Mr. Shiffrin, and more importantly, in some respects, for his family. All right. And I, so I will make that decision and not call for a vote. Fair enough? Okay. That is my report. I could go on for another hour, but it is kind of late now. Members' reports. We'll start with Ms. Br, Ms. Ms. Braccio.
Just, just one thing I, I would like to add that I was able to participate last week with the senior center, because obviously, the, the seniors are missing the connection. And, and for a lot of people, the senior center was a second home. So they've actually started through grants and through the friends of, 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 of council on aging and whatnot. They started doing the drive-through meal program. And I have to tell you, it was the most amazing thing to be able to participate in. They, they gave a little gift bag that had like a lollipop and, you know, silly stuff. It was a chicken was the theme. So they had a little chicken that, you know, you could build out of foam. And again, it was just, just seeing how much that little thing that the senior center meant to 85 seniors that came and participated in the drive-through. I, I just wanna say, it, it, it's incredible again to see the spirit in South Row and how everybody is adapting. All, all of our boards, committees, departments and whatnot are adapting and are just doing phenomenal things during these trying times. So I, I just wanted to share how, how amazing it was.
Lisa, what was the number again of, of seniors?
Eighty-five meals they supplied.
Wow.
Yeah. And it was, and it was all done, believe me. We had, you know, everything was followed. There were masks, there were gloves, there was like no touching. I mean, stuff was put in the backseats of cars. But again, it was just that, that as cars drove up, they had the opportunity to speak to Pam, which is a big deal to a lot of the seniors. She's the face. And then as they moved to the next stage, they actually stopped and got the meals. And they got to see people that worked at the senior center. They kept it to a minimum. It was only three or four people there, you know, participating through this whole thing. But they were able to see Cindy, they were able to see Peg. And again, it meant so much. I just wish I could have shared the joy on the faces. And again, a lot of departments are doing things like this in committees and commissions. But again, this is just one that I could highlight and just say kudos to everybody during these tough times for still making the citizens feel a part of what's going on. So that's all. Thank you.
Good stuff. Anyone else?
I got.
Mr. Stivers?
Couple of, of quick things. One, follow up to one of our last meetings. Ms. Braccio suggested that we make sure that the Capitol Planning Committee got the master plan survey results. And I did pass that along to Mr. Malinowski. And so I think we're connected better there now, and it sounds like it's gonna be helpful in terms of setting some context for them. So that's great. The other thing that I've become aware of is that, I don't know if folks are following this, but Youth and Family Services is now doing a Tuesday morning coffee talk program where Sarah Castle and her staff and guests come in and talk about issues relative, in many cases, to COVID and so forth. And I actually, I'm not a Facebook person generally, so I have no idea how many people watch that. But the feedback I've gotten informally is that's turned out to be very popular. So I would like to advertise that. It's just a little, you know, nice social break from some of the pressures and, and fun time to hear about what's going on and some of the programs there.
It's been over 900 views, Sam.
Wow, fantastic. So good. We, we might think about syndicating it, charging a fee.
It's one of the town things I watch when I'm on the elliptical, so.
Good. That's it for me. Thank you.
Anything else? No, I think we're all set. All right. Mr. Purple?
Given the, given the lateness of the hour, I have nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Consent agenda. Items A through K. Any holds on any of those items?
Small point on A.
All right, we'll hold off on A.
Couple of typos.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that we table item number F. We're not quite ready with that yet, but we will be ready by the next meeting.
I'd like to hold K, please.
Okay, so anything else? All right, so I'll move to approve items B, C, D, E, G, H, I, and J.
Second.
Ms. Braccio?
Aye, sorry.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Shay?
Aye.
Stivers?
Aye.
Healy, aye, unanimous. Before we get, get to the typos, F, I don't think we need a vote for that. Do we, Mark, to hold that over? It's just a?
No, you don't need a vote.
Okay. Kelsey, Chelsea, you, you held K?
I did, yes. So I understand Mr. Candela, who I, I don't know, has served on REC for, over a term and is looking, seeking reappointment. And so I was going through, I understand he's the CPC representative from REC, and he also sat in the master plan committee. And I did go through the meeting minutes from, I believe, June of 2019. And I do have concerns about the number of meetings that he was absent or tardy to. And so I would like to hear from Mr. Candela, Candela about his commitment to the position and what he is looking to do. And I, I understand people miss meetings or tardy to them. On occasion, things come up. But given the meeting minutes that I looked at for REC and CPC, it was about 50% participation. And then REC lost their master plan spot because he was not able to, to attend several of the meetings. So I think kind of with our goal-setting meeting and looking at the commitment from our boards and committees and, you know, enabling them to meet quorums and move forward, I would like to bring Mr. Candela in to discuss.
Fine with me?
Fine, yeah.
So A, Sam?
Yeah, I, I don't wanna be picky, but a couple of things. On page two, there's a comment that I had made about town water for Pine Hill. And my comment was town firefighting water, and the minutes made it sound like water for the homes on Pine Hill. So I would add firefighting. And then I mentioned about an electric light plant, not plan in there. And bottom of page four, there's a typo, begging instead of beginning. We, if begging could generate more revenue, I'd consider it, but small points.
All right, what's the, did you catch those, Vanessa, or? You did, okay. All right, with those edits, all right, I'll move to approve consent item A, the open session minutes from August 4th, 2020.
Second.
Ms. Braccio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shay?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy, aye, unanimous. We are on to any COVID-19 updates, Mr. Purple? Mr. Healy, aye, unanimous. We are on to any COVID-19 updates, Mr. Purple.
I do not have anything. I will actually just make one comment that we are seeing a little more of an uptick. At the at the townhouse. Some people are making appointments. Oftentimes, people are just showing up at the door and calling for the phone, calling the phone number. And departments have been very accommodating. A lot of departments are coming outside. And, you know, we've got that great picnic table right outside the door, it's a great place to to just sit and 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 do business. And so a lot of things are happening there. It's, so we are seeing, you know, we are seeing a little bit of an uptick. Have had conversations about with Chief Achilles as well as Emily Amico about thinking about reopening the townhouse. And they really would like to wait until after Labor Day, you know, to just keep things as they are at this point. And so again, this is not just, you know, a decision of one, I'm trying to make sure that we incorporate our Board of Health and our emergency management people into the decision. And, you know, ultimately, if if, you know, if the board needs to be involved, I will absolutely bring that to you.
Do you have a sense right now, Mark, when, let, geez, I was about to say, let's assume everything, let's assume things don't change. Well, I hope things do change, but I mean, is there, what's the? What, what's the capacity right now in in the townhouse? How many people are there on a on a daily basis? What sort of sort of somewhat normal activity is going on in in our townhouse these days?
So we continue to have the staff staggered, you know, we probably have half, you know, maybe a dozen, maybe a few more people. You know, there's been some latitude with, say, the clerk's office, given what they're dealing with right now. We've got a brand new town accountant who started, who is kind of segregated in her own space in her own office, so. But, you know, we we've staggered the offices, continuing to have people work remotely, you know, certain days. Or working certain, one week on, one week off when it comes to, say, payroll, things like that. So, you know, we, you know, we're pretty, you know, all offices at least have some staff in them every day.
Okay. Anything and anyone else have any questions on the COVID-19 status? Okay. Moving on to Roman numeral seven, other matters, continued discussion of the open space and recreation plan. Ms. Bracio, you want to carry the ball here?
I do. So and and Mr. Purple, you can correct me if anything that I state is inaccurate. So I I did have the opportunity to speak to Melissa Danza. Yesterday, as a matter of fact, just to to make sure that before I spoke that I was giving accurate information. So what they're looking for from the board at this point, planning board, recreation, conservation, and open space have all signed off on this document. The choice before us is basically we approve the document, it's been conditionally approved already. And if we say no, then the whole document basically is done and we have to start from scratch. And that may be the position that the board wants to take. We can approve this and then we could also, another opportunity, I guess, is to set parameters to be more involved going forward. I know I was a sitting member of Open Space at the time when this initially was being drafted. I know Mr. Stivers has said in on a lot of these conversations on the open space and REC Plan Two. Is it perfect? Probably not, Marty, absolutely not. I'm sure there are some concerns. The the concern that I had and why I wanted to bring this up was, are the concerns compelling enough to take a no vote? When there are a lot of things that are tied to the open space and REC Plan, one of them potentially is some some grants, you know, through. And I know Trails is looking for grants and recreation, and we've talked a lot about grants. Not having an approved open space and REC Plan does hinder that to some degree. So I asked Melissa, what would the requirement of the board be? And it's basically, we we support it and it moves forward, or we say no, and then it doesn't matter. It has to be unanimous support from all the boards, and four have supported it. So again, I'm I'm just putting this out there for discussion. You know, we we had concerns about it during the summer, I believe even before Chelsea got on the board. And I just, I didn't want it to go too far down the road without having some discussion and and some direction. And so that's basically why I brought it up, and that's really kind of the options. Mark, did I cover that as far as what our options really are at this point?
I I think you did a nice job with that. I have nothing to add to to what you what you've said.
I want to see if other folks want to weigh in. I will tell it right now that I'm going to vote yes. But then I'll give my little speech before I vote yes. But 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 just, I'm not going to bury the lead, so.
Thank you.
Before the speech.
No, no, yeah. Be careful, be careful what you wish for, Sam.
I've been following this for five years now, it started in 2015. And as Lisa said, is it perfect? No. Is the process flawed? Yeah, for a variety of reasons, some of which belong with the selectmen, some of which belong in other places. I think the lesson here is, we, I think we've been talking in some of the goal setting conversations, is that we do need to be more involved as these processes go along in the future. And so I think there's an interesting lesson there, but there's a lot of reasons, I think there's a lot of good data in this that's going to be helpful for a variety of purposes. So I think we ought to approve it and move on.
And if I can add just one more thing, Marty, that I forgot to add was, a lot of what is in this document was created based on public forums. So and again, whether, again, we know how public forums sometimes aren't as well attended as we'd like them to be. But a lot of the the goals and things that are in this document were based on the forums. And the two consultants that were used through this process use that data to reach some of the conclusions that are in there. Thank you.
Brian or Chelsea?
At the risk of getting Marty to change his mind, I will say nothing.
I'll just say that I did have the opportunity to read it and I agree with the other comments made.
Okay, and and again, I am going to vote yes, so it'll be, it'll be unanimous and the boards will be unanimous. You know, my my, whenever, whenever a document is new. I, you know, scour at least five or six different towns. This one, it ended up being more like 10 or 15 to see what what other towns do. Now, it's interesting, the document that's created here is very similar to what an awful lot of towns do. And the structure is similar, I guess, because we we use a consultant and I'm sure there's an industry out there for 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 folks making, you know, making a living off providing these consultant services and and they did a nice job. The 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 procedure we followed was flawed doesn't begin to describe it. And, you know, shame on everybody for 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 that. You know, but 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 proper i's were dotted, proper t's were crossed to come up with the report itself. It doesn't bind us, but here is mine, we don't have to decide this, you know, obviously tonight. But, you know, the so much of the data is, it's a seven year report, there used to be five year reports, now there's seven year reports. But so much of the data that went into this one is from 2016. I don't want to wait for 2027, which is, would be the next date. If if we just think of this as, this is the 2020 report. It really is a much older report than that, and maybe it'll be for a goal setting next, you know, next time around to put together a committee and and get going on this earlier and not not have our next report be in 2027, but a lot earlier. So with that little, not, it wasn't a diatribe, but that, but but, as I said, the the end product is fine. It doesn't bind us, you know, town meeting still has its final say about things. But but the the process for how we got there really is is one we shouldn't mimic in the future. So with that, I will even move that we support, what do we have to do? Support, is it, Mark? Support, approve, endorse?
I'm kind of looking at Lisa on this one, but I believe that I believe that it's.
Approve.
Approve.
Yeah, approve is what Melissa said, so.
Okay. I move that we approve the open space and recreation plan as submitted.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Bracio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shay.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. It was a lot shorter than you thought it was going to be, wasn't it?
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Very exciting.
All right, is Mr. Wood lurking out there?
He's got his hand raised.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, John, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Well, I thought advisory meetings went long.
So discussion of downtown initiative zoning. I guess, why don't? Again, I won't, I'm I'm not going to bury the lead again, but I'm going to quickly shift over to you. That I think in our discussions, both at the our goal planning meeting, John, and even before that. The Board of Selectmen have realized, taken the position that the initiative for the downtown initiative really needs to come from the Board of Selectmen. And which is, by the way, not a negative comment at all on the work that the EDC has done. You know, up to this point and and continuing. But so to the extent you were going to try to convince us of that, I think we're already convinced. But I think it would be helpful for you to tell us, and were you on, you you realize there's not going to be a fall town meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Unusual happens, even more unusual. So if you could just update us on where things are. And my idea is that sooner rather than later, the Board of Selectmen should act on that initiative. And pull interested parties together at one of our meetings to try to get all of the ships pointed in the same direction. And iron out disagreements, identify agreements, and try to get our downtown in the best possible shape that we can. All right, that's your lead in. Or yours.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, so as you know, we may not know, we hired Judy Barrett, it's a professional outside planner, to start reviewing it and help with this. At the last planning board meeting, I was online for a while, waiting to get on to tell them, to update them. And I had to take off, so I couldn't make it for that, and I sent them an email. She's looking to get, I won't call it a focus group, I won't even really call, I call it more of a roundtable. Meeting with some selectmen, some EDC members, some planning members, just to find out what the town is willing to or not willing to do with downtown. Just to get some guidance on that. We have a Zoom meeting with her scheduled with Sarah and Karina. And Claire and Marika on the 25th at 10, if anybody would be interested in attending. But I do know she'd like to get together with all parties involved in different committees to find out. Again, get some some feedback on on what or will not be able to be able to change. Because she says there's a lot of different ways we could attack the zoning down there. In a nutshell, I think it would be great if you guys could take the lead and get a meeting with all parties involved.
Hey, hey, John, let me let me ask you before I I see what other comments and questions there might be. But but and the 25th, are you guys videoing, videotaping that?
I believe so.
Okay, so if if we can't make it at 10, we can, I can watch it on my, on the elliptical, so. But I I think I I will.
That's not an ED, that's not an EDC scheduled meeting, that is just a a a call from Judy Barrett to them, I believe.
When you say to them, to who?
To Karina, Sarah.
Okay.
And Marika and Claire.
Okay.
I believe it's, I believe it may be a Zoom, I'll find out. I just saw the email while I was sitting here, so.
So that's probably not something that's going to be taped as a town meeting, then?
Probably not, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Does it make sense? And the idea of, you know, of meeting with a member of the Board of Selectmen and Board, Planning Board, I mean, that sounds fine. But but I actually think, and and obviously folks can correct me if I'm wrong, that it would make, I would like to hear from this woman. I mean, she and and find out what the, you know, what the options are. I I would have difficult time telling her what I think the best option is until I knew what the options were, the directions that we might be able to take. That that's my view. I'd I'd love to hear from someone who's an expert in this area and tell us what potential options we should be thinking about.
I agree. No, I, I'm sorry, I I agree, Marty, and I think a roundtable, even to do a meeting just specific to this, to be able to have the time to hear what Planning Board's thoughts are, hear from what the individual members of our board. We may all be looking for something different downtown, and I I I think it would be tremendously helpful to have her there and just have a a joint meeting between all pertinent parties. I could not think of a better thing that could happen to move this forward.
I know she wanted to put a Zoom meeting together, that she wanted to actually have control of, because she was going to have some polling questions and things like that. So if that's something you'd be interested, I know she'd love to set that up.
And Marty, I think that's a great idea, because Judy, as you may know, was involved in our infamous zoning advisory committee for about five years back around 2005, 2010. So she's very familiar with the town, knows a lot about the downtown area from that experience, very experienced, capable, and a Harvard graduate, as a matter of fact. So how could we go wrong?
No comment.
Not everybody can get into UNH, it's okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to note that Claire Reynolds has her hand up.
Okay, Claire, I'll be with you in a second. Ms. Malinowski, did you have anything to?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think having the, our full board get involved probably makes the most sense. Because I think if just one of us were to go to a roundtable, then I think I may not represent everything, everything that everybody here wants to see. So if we could get maybe a joint meeting versus kind of just representatives from each committee, I think then we'd get more consensus.
Yeah, John, that that, I I think that works better than than a a a focus group. Because, again, I think what we're talking about here is is, and I think Ms. Bracio said it. There are a ton of different views about, you know, what's the most important, what's the least important, et cetera. And I think we all need to to hear from somebody who's expert in this area what the options are. I mean, we be, you know, what we think is important might be crazy, and it would be nice to know that, so we can check it off our list. So, you know what, I'm going to try to call in on the 25th and 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 I will do some lobbying to convince Judy, what's her last name?
Barrett.
That that what we've been talking about here, which is a, which is a joint meeting with lots of faces on the screen, would make the most sense. Because I'd like to hear what the Planning Board is thinking about this.
And I'm sure she would, too.
And I suspect that that at least, you know, someone from Open Space would be interested in Trails, et cetera. But, you know, the the two, you know, in this area, that the the, again, the EDC has done a terrific job carrying the ball. You know, the the two main elected bodies that are going to have something to say about this are the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. And I think we have to be in the room together.
Couldn't agree more.
All right, well, let's see if we can try to get people in the room together. Okay?
Sounds good.
Hey, John, can you do one other thing? You you you, I'm not going to say burn my ear, because my ears didn't burn. But John is a is a is a font of ideas. And your latest idea, maybe other folks haven't heard about it, I just did, obviously, in a phone call yesterday about the 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 pop-up park you're talking about.
Oh, down in the triangle, I want that so bad. So I go through Ashland Lot, and they have that corner pop-up park, and it's a great use of space. And Sue and I were coming home on the motorcycle one day, and we went by the park, and she's like, why can't we do something there? And I was like, geez, I don't know. So I started looking around at it, and it's a beautiful piece of space. There's plenty of parking, there's 20 spaces across that the insurance company over there owns in a separate lot that's always available. There's probably space, about 10 spaces along the side of the road next to that park. There's probably space, about 10 spaces along the side of the road next to that park. You've got the T right across the street. I talked to some different food trucks that'd all be willing to come out for free. It'd be a great place to have vendors come. And I just think it's a good little piece of space that we could get something there. Plus, plus, you could use that Streets Grant money and possibly buy like some tents that could be used for businesses like in the fall. This, I was thinking maybe like, I don't know, $10,000, $25,000 would be wonderful if I could get it. But it's a great use of space. And then I know some other members have some ideas for some flea market-type things in the fall for downtown. So we're getting there, we're coming up with some pretty good ideas. But that little pop-up park place would be great, just saying.
And it would be great to do something south of Route 9.
Absolutely, Marty, I was just going to say that.
Yeah.
You know, because south of Route 9 is the second-best place to live in Massachusetts, apparently. You know, just the little village of Cordville took on, you know, the whole town of Hopkinton. But I'm not saying that this is a great side of town, but it is a great side of town.
All right. Any, so John, the ball is in our court, and to some extent, it's in my court. I'm going to be on that call unless something weird happens on August 25th. And hopefully, we'll report back on September 8th for a meeting, maybe even our next meeting at the end of September.
All we've wanted to do is have more collaboration on this with more boards and committees. So I'm psyched that you guys are going to take the lead and try to get other people involved, because if it's going to pass, we got to get it through everybody. And I know later on, after this initial meeting, you know, we're going to have plenty of forums like we did it before, when we had the initial one with the ULI and all that, when we had it at South Berthouds. We had a pretty good attendance at that night. We had different roundtables and different discussions. So it'd be something like that again, more, you know, planning after this. But I don't know if Claire's still at a hand up. She might be able to shed more light on, because she's the one that talked to Judy. She may be able to shed more light on what Judy's thoughts were, if you are willing to.
Oh, no, we'll definitely hear from, if I don't hear from Claire, I will hear from Claire, so.
There's a chat note, she hit the wrong button, so she doesn't.
Yeah, that was a mistake. She didn't mean to raise her hand.
Oh.
Oh, okay, all right.
But, oh, real quick, so I know it's a totally different subject, but it's kind of not. So downtown, we've gotten some calls and emails from the different businesses with the CSX. And we're going to be discussing it at our meeting on Thursday briefly. So if anybody wants to attend, I just figured I'd let you guys know it's on our agenda, I believe, to discuss it. And that's about it. I don't have that much information on what's going on there. So we're just in preliminary discussions, so. That was all.
John, can I ask, who are you in discussions with?
We got an email from Mr. Morrow about it, and I think we shared that with you. And then I believe Chris spoke with someone at the barbershop.
Okay, I'm just gonna, and again, I'm one member of the board, and everyone else can certainly disagree with me. I would just ask you to err on the side of caution.
Oh, absolutely.
Let me just say, in the note that we received, the Morrows have retained counsel. So I would, and Marty, you could probably speak to that a little bit better than me. But I would just ask you to err on the side of caution. That's all. Thank you. On your discussions.
Got it.
Yeah, I don't think there's any disagreement with that. Okay. All right, I think we're done with the downtown initiative. John, thank you very much. Thanks for hanging in there.
Thank you, and you guys have a wonderful evening. And wow, you guys have a long night, and thank you very much for taking the time to speak with me. And let me know if you have any questions on anything, and I'll talk to you guys soon.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, bye.
Management. Mr. Stivers.
Okay, as I think folks know, we've gotten some feedback on tree removal vegetation management recently, particularly with some activity on Flag Road. And I've been following up on that and have a brief report. I think there's some progress happening here. Just wanted to update people, there's more to come. But had a discussion with Karen Gallagher and Mark, Planning Board Representatives, and Town Council to understand all the various moving parts to this process. And there are quite a few in terms of state law, residents' interests, DPW requirements, Planning Board's role, and some legal liability exposure relative to tree removal. And I think the goal is to simply clarify guidelines for what needs to happen in various circumstances for this. And so everybody involved, including residents, DPW, Planning Board, et cetera, know what the process is. And then we've got some yardsticks to make sure that we're following the process. So, so far at least, the conversation has focused on some next steps in terms of us actually taking advantage of our opportunity to get an annual tree report or tree hazard report from the utilities, vegetation management report. We're allowed to do that by law to require it, and we've not been doing that. So that will give us more visibility in terms of what the plans are for utilities. We're also thinking about getting an inventory of trees being considered for removal. There are numbers that DPW has been alerted to, is watching, but we don't really have a full picture of the extent of the number of trees that need to be removed and issues relative to condition of those trees. And I think, again, there's opportunity to get more input from arborists in terms of which trees are truly dead. And recent contention has been around, you know, what's really dead. And again, technical and professional input on that is an important part of the process. And there's issues relative to roles for scenic ways. There are some additional requirements for notice and so forth for scenic ways, of which we have about 24 in town. Planning Board is much more actively involved in that, according to state law. And again, we need to be sure everybody knows what the right role is there. And I think the goal is to create, at least near-term, a draft of guidelines for tree removal, particularly that we can look at, review, discuss, get additional input on as we go forward. With the expected outcome, I think, being clear statement for everybody, a view of the backlog of trees considered to be considered for removal, understanding what the utilities are thinking about in terms of this process, being able to much more actively and transparently communicate with residents about what the plans are. I think the outcome is going to be more tree warden hearings. We've had relatively few of those recently. And I think DPW is on board in terms of having more activity in that area, giving people more of an opportunity to express opinions about what's happening in this process. And the challenge that I see is that if we get a clearer picture of what's going on in terms of trees that need to be removed, there's going to be, I think, potential issue relative to more trees to be removed that we can easily afford to remove, according to the budget process, the budget's expended for that. So I think we need to work to balance that and figure out how to not have a list of trees that arborists have said are dangerous trees and not remove them. That creates some liability for us, according to Town Council. So there's going to be, again, a bit of a tight rope to walk on that process. But I think a clearer understanding of what's out there, what's required, whose role is what, and allowing for more communication to the public and more public input to that process will deal with some of the concerns that I've been hearing about recently. And we had an issue a few months ago on Deerfoot Road that people were unhappy about. And I think, again, this can help clear up some of those kinds of issues. It's not, again, so much that, I think, there is a lot of argument about at least most of the trees that need to be removed, because there are a number of them that are clearly dead and clearly a hazard. But it's the subjective parts of it that I think needs to be more out there for public to participate in and comment on. And I think we can come up with a process that will do that. So next step is to continue to develop a written view of this and present it to us, to the board for discussion, and figuring out then, what do we want to do about it? How are we going to deal with it going forward? And I think there's a great opportunity to make that an easier process for all parties, town and citizens. So that's sort of where we are, and I will continue to pursue it unless folks don't want me to. Questions, comments?
I've got a couple of comments.
Already lost your audio, Marty.
He froze.
I didn't think my comments were that sharp.
Looks like you're up, Lisa.
All right, well, until.
I'm going to give other folks a chance.
He's back? He's not back. So Chelsea, until we can, oh, there you are, you're back, Marty. Okay, go ahead.
I am. You can hear me again?
We can.
Then we lost.
Okay. I'll talk, let me go.
Chelsea, why don't you go ahead?
Jennifer, doing.
Go first then.
Somebody at Marty's place is watching Netflix, I think, streaming HD video.
Thanks for doing the legwork, Sam. Are you anticipating that there'll be some sort of changes coming before this board to review? Or kind of, and maybe you don't know yet, but what can we anticipate in?
I think a draft of a guidelines document that more clearly defines who does what when, that we would discuss and modify as appropriate and eventually support as appropriate. And we're on point for this in some ways, because in fact, the Board of Selectmen is the final appeal process for some of this. So in fact, if we, you know, do things that change the current process in certain ways, we could wind up with a lot more business in terms of tree appeals, which in some ways is not perfect, in other ways, it's not a bad part of the process. So that's sort of where I see it going, and we'll see, you know, what you folks think of, what seems to the folks who are involved more directly in the process, think makes sense going forward. And a lot of the public input as well.
I assume Planning Board will be involved with drafting those. Would also have to approve it or agree with whatever we're doing?
Exactly. And I've talked with Planning Board representatives, so I think it's important to keep them in the loop.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Brian or Lisa? No, again, just, Sam, it sounds like a great idea. I mean, one of the things Brian and I found out during the Main Street project, and maybe he already knew this, but there was a bit of a clamor about a number of the trees near the community house, because they had to be taken down. And it turns out, you know, most of them were diseased anyway. And so an awful, I think, one of the things that may happen, there may be a flurry of activity at the front end. But I think that there may be a realization that, that a lot of the time, the reason these trees need to be removed isn't just because there might be a potential for dealing with utility lines and the like. But a lot of times, a tree looks healthy, but when you actually get an arborist in there, you realize they're not.
Right, exactly. So again, having an opportunity, more of the fact base around these things, and have that communicated, I think, makes everybody's job a lot easier.
No, I think, great idea. Thanks for taking the lead on this, appreciate it.
Goal is to find, have something available for a subsequent meeting very soon here, maybe September 8th, even if possible.
Great.
Can't get it on the agenda, we'll keep going on it, though. Thank you.
Great news. Next up, our second round of public comment. Has anyone hung in till 10:15?
Yes, Mr. Lit has a question.
Oh, okay.
Let me just move him over.
Timothy, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. So I just wanted to remind you that back on June 23rd, I reminded you that the issue of safe pedestrian and non-motorized access to the public safety building has been open for about a year. At that meeting, the commitment was that if it didn't make your next agenda, it would make the one after that. And so it's time to remind you again.
All right. It will be on the September 8th agenda.
Thank you. That's it.
All right. Anything else? Anyone else out there? Okay. Thanks for almost a four-hour meeting, folks, but I think we're going to have a few of these. As I said, the agendas look pretty chock-full for the foreseeable future. But as I said, appreciate everybody hanging in, but I'm waiting to hear a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Brascio.
Aye.
Malinowski. Shay.
Aye.
Stivers.
Aye.
Healy, aye, not even using full names. All right, we're unanimous.
The rate is dropping precipitously here.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Bye-bye.